The December ninth, two thousand and twenty five, school board regular meeting is called to order. Ms. Truski, please call the roll.
Mr. Cherry.
Here.
Mr. Link.
Here.
Dr. Jamison.
Here.
Ms. Quintana.
Here.
Ms. Trigg.
Here.
Mrs. Watkins.
Here.
Mrs. Apeau.
Here. All right. Thank you to all of those attending the meeting in person and those that are joining us via the RCPS YouTube channel. And I'm glad everyone that was able to make it here was able to drive in safe. I wanted to share that due to a prior obligation, the auditor's overview typically is presented during the opening portion of the board meeting. Will be provided later this evening. Next is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended reflecting the removal of the recognitions portion? And the addition of the agenda item titled School Performance and Support Framework, or SPSF, update to the superintendent's reports.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Cherry, seconded by Ms. Quintana. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. And the motion carries and the agenda is approved as amended. Also, please note that the recognitions portion is just going to be rescheduled at a later date. This was due to the inclement weather, why we decided to move that portion of this evening's agenda. Onto our moment of silence and pledge to the flag. Please keep the following in your thoughts. Family and friends of Loretta Williams, former employee that served RCPS from nineteen seventy seven to two thousand and eleven as an administrative assistant at multiple locations throughout the division on her passing. Family and friends of Lori Vaught, former school board member that served from two thousand and eight to two thousand and seventeen and served as vice chair from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and seventeen on her passing. Friends, family and coworkers of Dee Thomas, science teacher at Patrick Henry High School on her passing. Family, friends and coworkers of William McDowell, building manager at Forest Park Academy on the loss of his father. Family, friends and coworkers of Michelle Maddox, an operations team member at Patrick Henry on the loss of her mother. Family, friends and coworkers of Vivian Sanchez Jones, a student support specialist at Patrick Henry on the loss of her father. Family and friends of Linda Hammond, former Roughnor Science teacher who supported numerous science fairs on her passing. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise and join me in the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic, for which it stands. By nation, by God. Indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay. Let's continue with the personnel list. Is there a motion and a second to approve the personnel list as presented?
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Jamison, seconded by Ms. Watkins. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye, those opposed say no.
Aye.
Aye. And the motion carries and the personnel list is approved. Onto the consent agenda. Is there a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Cherry, seconded by Ms. Trigg. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye, those opposed say no.
Aye.
And the motion carries, the consent agenda is approved. Ms. Watkins, please tell us about the gifts that have been received by RCPS.
Thank you. The board accepts with gratitude the following donations. Mr. Greg Osterhaus provided a gift of one thousand dollars to the McKinney Vento program. Straight Street provided a gift of thirty-eight air mattresses to the McKinney Vento program. And the estimated value of that donation was eleven hundred and forty dollars. We thank our partners, community partners so much for pouring into our students and their families. Especially Straight Street when, you know, they are supporting our students themselves. And they, you know, they could use donations and, and support and volunteers themselves. And for them to give back to us also, it really shows what an exceptional program that is. And so I want to thank Straight Street and Mr. Greg Osterhaus for all of their donations. And to all of our community partners, if there's anyone else that wants to partner with us, we are here with our arms and hands open. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watkins. Onto citizen participation on agenda and non-agenda items. Mr. Cherry, do we have any signups for agenda or non-agenda items this evening?
No, we do not.
Thank you very much. And onto the superintendent's reports, Dr. White, please provide your update.
Yes, thank you. And good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board. This evening, we're bringing forward several items for your information and for your consideration. Approval of the local gifted plan, a staffing report from a human resources team, an update on the School Performance and Support Framework, a preview of the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year budget, an update on the true up funding application, and an update on the boundary study. So before we get to our agenda, I would like to highlight a few items for this, for the board and for the public's information. First, I hope everyone was able to stay safe and warm over the past week and enjoyed all of their snow days. That's, it's over. Hate to bust your bubble, it's over. As of right now, and anything can change overnight, right, Mr. Perkins? Anything can change overnight, we'll monitor it, just like we've been doing all day. Monitor it overnight. And if anything changes, we'll let you know. But it's not likely to change, come school on time tomorrow. So that's, that's what, how we're planning right now. And so, speaking of winter break, don't forget to join me for our winter storytime. It's coming up on, on December twenty-second at seven o'clock. So gather the entire family, gather everybody around, get in your favorite PJs. I'll be in my favorite PJs. And then get your cocoa, we will be sending home those hot cocoa packets to all of our elementary school students. And it's always a good time. So, and I'll be reading two stories as I always do. Remember, early literacy is so very important. And so I would ask the entire family to gather around and let's support early literacy and have a little fun while we're doing it as well. So December twenty, Monday, December twenty-second at seven PM. And so those hot cocoa packets will go home on Friday, December nineteenth. The tickets are on sale also for this year's Breakfast with Santa, which will take place this Saturday, December thirteenth from nine to eleven AM. And this is the sole fundraiser for the Help the Homeless Fund. And will feature a meet and greet photo opportunity with Santa. Performances from Patrick Henry High School's production of Elf Junior, the musical. And if you missed it, you missed a treat. There, our students, our staff members, they are so, so amazing. But our kids are so talented. And many of them will be performing at the, at Breakfast with Santa on Saturday. There will also be a performance by the Monterey Elementary School Choir. And of course, carols and crafts and more. So all attendees will also receive access to a special virtual storytime with Santa as well. So tickets are ten dollars for adults, six dollars for children under eighteen, and RCPS staff, or twenty-five dollars for family four pack. And tickets are available online, on our website, and clicking on the Breakfast with Santa information in the orange banner. And tickets will also be available at the event. Now, on Tuesday, November twenty-fifth, we hosted our annual Take Your Legislator to School Month event at William Fleming High School. Joining us were Senators, State Senator David Soudaline, and delegates Sam Rasool and Joe McNamara, Mayor Joe Cobb, Councilman Nick Hagan, who's here with us this evening. So thank you for joining us at the Take Your Legislator to School Month. And several of our school board members as well joined us, so thank you for that. During the event, we discussed the school boards and the, the division's legislative priorities and learned more about the priorities of our elected officials. Members of the public who are interested in learning more can visit the school board page located under the leadership menu on the RCPS website and click on legislative priorities. Lastly, we are very excited to share that Roanoke City Public Schools has received the Trusted Learning Environment Seal from the Consortium of School Networking. We are only the third school division in the Commonwealth of Virginia to receive this recognition, which is the nation's only student data privacy framework designed specifically for school systems. So congratulations. Earning this seal means that RCPS has strong measurable, has taken strong and measurable steps to protect the privacy of student data. This also meets one of our strategic plan goals. So congratulations again to Wesley Williams, our Executive Director of Technology and his entire team, as well as our entire division, because it takes all of us to make sure that we are emphasizing student data privacy. So congratulations, Wesley. So to begin our report this evening, I will ask our Chief Freeman, our Chief Instructional Officer, as well as Laura Kelly, our Supervisor of Gifted Programs, to come forward to present the five-year local gifted plan for the school board's approval. So come on up.
Thank you, Dr. White. Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. White. This evening, we come to bring to you this something that's preliminary that we do every so often in regards to our local gifted plan. Ms. Laura Kelly's here tonight, who is also celebrating a birthday today. To present our gifted plan and to answer any questions you may have for asking approval of the signature of our superintendent tonight.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
No, 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 no. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, Dr. White. Thank you for allowing me tonight to go through our local gifted plan and how we are serving and meeting the needs of our advanced and gifted learners. There we go. I've got the PowerPoint that I think you have all on your desktops there. Every, as Mr. Freeman said, every five years, the local plan needs to go through review at the state level. And ours went through last year. We received recommendations and accommodations that we then took into consideration of adding or deleting from our plan. And tonight, we are presenting it for your approval. So I'm going to start with who and what is the gifted department. We are within the Special Education and Exceptional Children's Department. However, our students fall in every single department of Roanoke City Public Schools. We obviously are in the academic department. We have gifted resource teachers that provide services, our Plato programs, differentiation advanced programs, our English language learners, our fine arts programs, and our world languages. That's all in the academic departments. In the instructional department, we have special education. And that, we have what is considered two E, which is twice exceptional students. They are students that have an IEP five oh four and a gifted identification. And then we have in our Student and Success and Support Services Department, we have our advanced courses, our Governor School and Career and Technical. The local gifted plan tries to encompass all of those areas within it. So who do we serve? We have nine Plato classrooms, that is for our third through fifth grade students that are GIA. GIA is General Intellectual Aptitude. That is for students that have been identified both math and reading. That's how they will enter into the Plato program. All seventeen elementary schools feed into those two Plato programs. Highland Park has six classrooms, and then Fairview has three classrooms. Our six gifted resource teachers, five of them are at the elementary level, serving all seventeen schools. We have one that services our five middle schools. They are serving approximately eleven hundred students a week by either pull-in or push-out services. They can be our GIA students, that, again, that general intellectual aptitude. Those would be students that have chosen not to go to our Plato programs or at the upper levels. Our math-specific students, our reading-specific students stay at their home school. We have talent pool for our kindergarten to second grade students. And differentiation means those students that didn't quite make the threshold to be formally identified, but we still see something in them, and we continue their services on a year-to-year basis. Our advanced courses, we have approximately two thousand six hundred and fifty students that are sitting in an advanced course this year, which is amazing. Our Governor School has approximately a hundred and thirty students that are enrolled this year. For a moment, the diamond that is over on the left-hand side, we spend a lot of our time in that high-quality tier-one instruction. But we also spend some time in our tier-two and three with our intervention and remediation. I'm here to say that we definitely need to be spending our time also in our tier-two and three for our advanced learners and our gifted learners, which we do with a lot of those different programs off to the right. But we do have students sitting in a general education class that are identified, so we need to make sure we're meeting their needs. This is in the local gifted plan, so I just wanted to highlight what the continuum of services that we offer throughout K through twelve. Our middle school courses, we have many opportunities for our students to participate in advanced courses. They can choose to only participate in one, two, three, or all four. Are any of the ones that have an asterisk next to it, it is a high school Carnegie unit. So they're taking high school courses at the middle school level, so algebra and geometry at, in the math pathway. We have earth science in the science. And then we are very excited, next year, the world geography, that will be a high school credit course that will be offered to our eighth grader. So that's not currently offered, but it will be next year. All of our science advanced courses, the students must participate in the science fair each year. The advanced opportunities at the high school level, we have Governor School, Advanced Placement, Dual Enrollment, World Language, our CTE, which is our Rotek and Day Tech. We have many industry certifications that students can lead, leave when they graduate. Our Visual and Performing Arts, as Dr. White just said, with Elf, we have many talented VPA students. Very excited about our summer residential Governor School. I just lifted up ten applicants for adjudication for VPA. And they are now doing their auditions. And then once they get those scores, I'll receive them, review them, and decide who will go on to the state level. I also just received applications for the academic programs for the summer. And I apologize, I'm going to go back real quick to one slide because I missed something. And I knew I would. On this page, I was telling Ms. Truski that I would miss it. The norms and screening, we use local norms for identification, which means that we are looking at our students at their school level, at their city level, and the national level. That provides us opportunities to identify more of those underrepresented populations. And the same with our universal screening. We, I thank you for the support that we have universal screening, meaning that every single first grader takes an Agliary, every second and fifth grader takes a COGAT. And we find students that way that may not be lifted up by a teacher recommendation. I just presented at the National Gifted Association in November on this. And Roanoke City was highlighted that we were one of seven schools, that we made that eighty-twenty representation. No school in Virginia makes the hundred. So if you have eighty, or fifty percent EL students, do you have fifty percent of EL that are gifted? Nobody makes the hundred percent. But we were one of seven schools that did make that, and that's a huge accomplishment. And it's, I really believe it's because of the local norms and the universal screening. Sorry, I forgot that. Sorry, I forgot that. And then, when you receive this PowerPoint, that is a link to the local gifted plan, so you won't have to hunt and peck to find it. We have a local gifted advisory board that meets every, four times a year. And we have representations from teachers, principals, parents, our supervisors from all four content areas, so that we can constantly be looking at our plan and reviewing it. This is for your knowledge for later on. If you don't remember what one of those acronyms stand for, that hopefully will help you. But they are in the gifted plan. And then, I am open to any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Does the board have any comments or questions for Ms. Kelly? Big thank you for the acronym page. That should be an index on every presentation. Yes, Dr. J, Ms. Sin.
Yeah, I just have a, thank you so much for the presentation. It's really helpful, and it's nice to see the overview. Local norms and universal screening, how long have we, is that a relatively new, is that a shift in how we've gone about this? It's been a long time since I sat on the committee, so.
No, we have been doing it, I have been with Roanoke City for 12 years. We started it on, after my first year. So, we have been doing it for 11 years. However, nationally, it is still not the norm. And we are leading in that. And I do, as I said, with that research and Roanoke lifted up into that, I believe that that is because we have been doing the local norms for as long as we have.
Great.
And universal screeners. And the state is proposing, and we're keeping our fingers crossed, that they may start requiring every division to do a universal screener at second grade. It hasn't passed yet, but we're keeping our fingers crossed that that will happen.
And this is curiosity, really. I'm assuming what that helps do, too, is account for developmental differences in children.
It does. It counts for that and also your socioeconomic disadvantage on many of the different components. It doesn't take one day in the life of a child. It takes more multiple criteria into account.
And I just had a question, talent pool? I'm not quite sure. What was, what does that mean, the talent pool?
The talent pool is our 22 students that, when the gifted resource teachers at the beginning of first grade will go in and do whole classroom lessons, they are looking for students that are thinking up and beyond their peers. And then, we do the Nagliary, that's another dipstick to find those students. And so, they are not formally identified, but we're seeing something, and so the gifted resource teachers pull them once a week.
So, that's the system. When you said we may have seen something, it was probably out of one of these processes.
Possibly there, or it could be a late bloomer, and it could be a fifth grader that, all of a sudden, with the COGAT, universal screener, somebody that didn't show up in second grade may show up in fifth.
Very good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have you ever identified it going backwards? You saw something, you identified something in second grade, and then followed that child to the fifth grade, and something fell off? And then, you had to kind of figure out what was going on?
We certainly, constantly are looking at, but once identified, always identified. We are never going to go and say, Ms. Watkins, you were, you know, gifted in second grade, and now in fifth, you're not. That won't happen, but we will constantly be looking at making sure that we're meeting your needs. Thank you. You're welcome.
Ms., Mr. Link.
I lied, I have a question. I changed my mind. I'm sorry I didn't catch it the first time. Can you please explain again the cohort that we are now in? No one hits 100%, but we hit 80%. Can you go back and go through that again?
So, I co-presented with somebody from Chesapeake, and during her dissertation, she looked at all 132 divisions to see which divisions were finding students that were from four categories: African-American, economically disadvantaged, Hispanic Latinx, and EL, or English learners. And looking at how many were representing according to their population.
Okay.
So, if we had 20% EL students, do we have 20% gifted EL students?
Okay, okay.
And nobody made 100% mirroring their population.
Okay.
But there were seven divisions that had an 80/20 representation.
Okay.
Giving a little grace there, but we were only one of seven that hit all four categories.
Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Thank you for that information. And as somebody who came into the division with elementary-age kids right post-COVID, too, you know, this was one thing that I remember sitting down with a gifted resource teacher to find out, what does this process look like and what does it mean? So, and I didn't realize that, you know, I, you know, all my kids have been young enough, like a lot of us, with elementary kids to take the COGAT and the Nagliary coming through. I didn't realize that other divisions didn't do that. But I also know that we use, there's a whole rubric with a lot of inputs that go into trying to help identify students there. So, I do appreciate that. I liked your note about, you know, maybe it going statewide, maybe a note for PGNL about making sure it's a funded mandate there.
That's what they're trying for. They truly are trying for that, so we're keeping our fingers crossed.
Got it. And then, I also noted you had the various middle school offerings, and not being identified in elementary also doesn't preclude you from being able to enroll in those classes as well. And, and I also noted the science fair, which I have a current sixth grader, so it's a gift that hasn't stopped giving yet until December 19th. So, thanks for that. Had to move the poster off the table so we could eat dinner tonight. So, so anyways, but thank you for all of that information. So, if there's no other further questions, is there a motion and a second to approve the 2024-2029 Local Plan for the Education of the Gifted as presented and authorize the signature of the superintendent?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Watkins, seconded by Ms. Quintana? Okay. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye, those opposed say no.
Aye. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. The motion carries, and the 2024-2029 Local Plan for the Education of the Gifted is approved.
Enjoy your, the rest of your birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday. Thank you, Mrs. Kelly, and thank you, Mr. Freeman, as well. I'll now ask our Chief Human Resources Officer, Dominic McKee, to come forward for the annual staffing report. He will be assisted by members of his human resources team. Mr. McKee?
Thank you, Dr. White. Good evening, Madam Chair, Ms. Apel, Mr. Vice Chair, Mr. Cherry, members of the school board, Superintendent Dr. White, and all those joining both in person and on RCPS YouTube channel. This evening, I'm joined by Ms. Jennifer Bailey, Executive Director of Human Resources, and Ms. Carrie Gates, Executive Director of Professional Learning. Together, we will provide a comprehensive overview of our current workforce, share progress and challenges in recruitment, retention, and professional growth, and outline strategies that position us for continued success. Our commitment remains crystal clear. Every student deserves exceptional educators and support staff, and every employee deserves unwavering support, recognition, and opportunities to grow, because our employees are the heart of our success. Or put in other words from, from Mr. Deeds, if you remember last year, he said, "If we don't feed our teachers, they will eat our students." So, I'm still trying to process what that means. But this report reflects not only where we stand today, but where we are headed, toward a workforce that is diverse, engaged, and equipped to meet the evolving needs of our students and schools. You have your staffing report in front of you. It's right here. And we will be referring to it throughout the presentation. I want to take this time to thank the entire HR department, the marketing department, Oasis, and the print shop for helping us put the staffing report together. So, a quick overview, we will look at our current status of our workforce. We'll look at our vacancies when it comes to our central office vacancies, as well as our school-based vacancies, and then where we, where we go from here in terms of recruitment, retention, and professional growth. So, as you know, we updated the strategic plan. Dr. Schultz and his team helped revamp the strategic plan. We moved from pathway six to pathway four. We went from two goals to three goals. And our three goals are that we will practically recruit and hire a highly effective workforce. A second goal is to retain employees by fostering a rewarding work environment and offering competitive benefits. And our third goal is to facilitate professional growth opportunities for all of our employees. Throughout this presentation, we will reference targets and objectives that will align with these goals. These are detailed in pages six, seven, and eight of your manual. I always wanted to do that. I always wanted, but I'll stick to my day job.
Six, seven, so bad, didn't you?
Huh? I've been waiting, I've been waiting all day to say that. But these are in your, in pages six, seven, and eight in your, in your manual.
Oh, my God. At least it means something.
It does, I know, in context. It's not nothing, it's something. So, we'll start with our overview of our staff. We have 2,395 full-time staff. Eighty-three, excuse me, 73% identify as white, and 27% identify as minorities. Again, this information can be found in, on page 31 of your staffing report. And we always, in your staffing report, you see the numbers compared to this year as to compared to last year. So, we are still continuing to make, make movements. Next, moving to our teachers, we have 1,212 teachers, full-time teachers with us. And of those, 83% identify as white and 17 identify as minorities. Again, this information can be found on page 34 of your staffing report. Now, as you compare the different, this year and last year, we're still making, we still have a ways to go, because again, this doesn't mirror our, our students nowhere close, but we're still making progress. And you see that maybe not the percentages haven't changed, but if you look at the numbers closely, you see that numbers are increasing. So, we are making progress. Next, we want to look at our generation by staff. You're probably saying, well, what, what is the purpose of this? It's twofold. One, if you look at, we'll start with baby boomers. There's a shift. Last year, it was, they were at 15%. This year, they're at 13%. So, they shifted 2% down. Now, I'm going to jump down to Gen Z's. Last year, they were at 13%. They went up to 15%. So, they went up 2%. Well, the reason why we want to look at baby boomers and Gen Z's, because, especially baby boomers, because if, when they start to retire, which they will, this year, next year, and the year after, we have to make sure we're prepared for that retirement cliff and make sure we recruit early and often to make sure we can fill those positions. And in addition, Gen X is going to be part of that group, too. Oh, that's you? Okay. I thought you guys were Gen Z's.
That's a good answer.
Okay. You like that? You like that?
That was cute. That was cute. I love being a Gen X. We have some sense.
But, that's pretty good. But to look at Gen X and millennials, those are the majority of our workforce. Millennials? Okay. Because I got a purple tie on today, is that why? Okay. But not only that, we also have to figure out what supports do these generation employees need. So, for example, for baby boomers, they want to be recognized their accomplishments and years of service through awards, acknowledgements. And we do like challenge coins, Dr. White does challenge coins. We do recognition awards such as Teacher of the Year, Support Staff of the Year, Leader of the Year. And we hear you, baby boomers, you want, they want the service pins back. So, we're, we're working to bring those service pins back. They want them, we've heard them loud and clear. For Gen X's, they want us to provide leadership opportunities such as new teacher mentors, and Ms. Gates will go more into that. For millennials, they want to offer channels for anonymous feedback. They love to get feedback, but don't want to be, don't want to be attached to it. Mr. Cherry? So, we've done that by doing state surveys and also doing staff perception surveys. So, we've done that as well. And last thing with Gen Z's, they want to make sure that they, we provide them a variety of professional development options that allow choice and flexibility. And that, and Ms. Gates will talk a little bit about that as well. But the biggest things to, throughout all the generations, to ensure that they have work-life balance, as well as they, they have professional development and planning with their people.
Break you by. It's a new building.
Yeah, can you? I don't know where the battery went.
Oh, okay.
Thanks. You see teamwork right here?
He's a Chicago.
See, here we go. I do that with Cam. Thank you.
I was going to say, it was probably. I saw a lot of people about a battery.
I forgot, baby boomer sooner.
Oh, no. Oh, no.
I mean, because they did make the CFP, so. I don't see Tennessee. Okay. All right, okay, I'll get back to, okay. Next, we'll move on to our, our vacancies for central office staff. So, keep in mind, you have two dates up here. You have October 1st, 2024, then you have October 1st, 2025. We will also go into what is the updated vacancy as of December 1, because these numbers have improved. So, you see right here, you see that our vacancies have improved or decreased from October 1 last year to October, October 1 this year. And so, as of December 1, our vacancies, our administrators, we're still sitting at one. Professional staff, we're still sitting at, we're at two. And then, classified staff, we're at .3. So, I don't know how we're going to find that .3 position, but we will find it and we will fill it.
I'd like that .3 of a job.
You like that? Next, I'll move on to school-based staff. I'm going to spend a little bit of time on this so we can peek behind the curtains a little bit. So, as you see right here, October 1 of 2025, for our teachers, we're 11.5 vacancies. Professional staff, we're at four, and then administrators, we're at zero. As you remember, when I, when we reported back on the beginning of school, we were at three teacher vacancies when we opened the school. So, that was something to, definitely to celebrate. So, so let me go back up to teachers and talk through a little bit those vacancies. So, as you remember, that we added 35 new EL positions because of standards of quality. We also added 22 additional teaching positions to lower class sizes and to help with special ed caseloads. And then, since October 1, we had 19 teachers resign or retire. So, with all of that being said, as of December, December 1, we're sitting at three special ed teacher vacancies. So, we've worked very hard to make sure we get, keep those numbers where we need to be. Of course, we want it to be zero, and we were working really hard to get that number, but we're, we're very proud of that. So, for professional staff, those, these are one of our challenging in terms of employees, because a majority of the vacancies are with speech pathologists. And so, we're working hard with special ed and with the marketing department, as well as when I talk to other school divisions, they've gone to, to a third party to hire for these positions because they're just hard to fill. And that's something that we've done in the past, and we'll definitely look forward to in the future. So, with our professional staff, we started out with four vacancies as of October 1, and as of December 30, December 1, we're sitting at 13 vacancies. And nine and a half, nine, nine, 9.5 are speech pathologists. So, that's something that we really have to work on. And then, lastly, looking at administrators, that's zero. That looks phenomenal. We want to keep it that way. But keep in mind, we had five principals vacancies that left. Three were promoted to central office positions, one in this division, two, the other two, another division, other two divisions. We had one leave out of education completely, another one moved because of family reasons. And we were able to fill those positions with four internal assistant principals, so we were able to promote from within. And then, assistant principals, we had 15 vacancies. And of those 15, remember, four moved up to become principals, and nine were filled with internally from teachers and mentors and whatnot. And then, central office, we had one position filled by a principal within Roanoke City. And then, so as of December 1, we're still, still sitting at zero, so we're proud about that. So, I do want to point out that throughout this, it took several departments to make sure we get the numbers where they were. And this was led by Dr. Shawanda Jackson, our Director of Recruitment and Organization Engagement, Angela Carr, our Licenseure Coordinator, Doug Martin, Professional Staffing Coordinator, Paul Browning, Classified Staffing Coordinator, Claire Metzl, Director of Communications, also Academic Instructions, Hiring Managers such as the Principals, Program Directors, Assistant Principals, Instructional Supervisors, and the Special Department. We all, when we say we are one, we all really work together to make sure we fill these I just want to talk about two more challenges with this group. One is that with the teachers, we have a high teacher absenteeism rate. And if, that's on page 24 of your manual, and you'll see that, that the numbers are much higher last year than they were this year, or excuse me, much higher this year than they were last year. So, we're working closely with, we're setting up a teacher task force to look at absenteeism, and what are, what are some recommendations they can bring forward to us, to bring to you in terms of how can we fix the teacher absenteeism? And also looking at schools that have a high absenteeism rate, and see what we can do to figure exactly, see what things we can bring forward to figure out how to lower that absenteeism rate. Because when we have high absenteeism, of course, we don't have enough subs to fill them, so then we have a problem with subs filling them as well. So, we want to make sure that ESS is on that team as well, so we can all work together to figure out how we can make this thing work. And the last thing, one of the, I know the vacancies, we're proud of, of how many people we've hired and whatnot, but we have 167 professional provisional licensed teachers. That's up from back in 2022, 23, we had 140. And last year, we had 125, which was our lowest. This year is our highest, so we have to make sure we give them that wraparound support. Ms. Gates will talk about the mentoring program that we have that's strong, been for the past. Ms. Gates will talk about the, the mentoring program that we have that's strong, been for the past two years. She'll go into that. We also want to work with academics and instruction to make sure we also provide that continued wraparound support as well. Next, I want to talk about our classified vacancies. As you see, sixty-nine with the IAs, it pops out. Really, you know, it, it, it's something that we really have to work on. We have one building ops, we have zero administrative assistants, and then we have zero in terms, I mean, thirteen in terms of school security and financial support positions. So, just to give you a little bit of background, as you know, we had eight IAs move up to, into teacher positions. Over the past three years, we've had twenty-five total IAs move into teaching positions. So, that's phenomenal, but that's leaving us with vacancies in terms of at the IA level. So, what we, what we've, what we've done is our Assistant Director of Recruitment Organization Effectiveness, Morgan Struthers, is, is working with special ed as well as with Paul Browning, our Classified Staff Coordinator, Victoria Thornton, our HR Specialist. Again, Claire Metzl with the Communications Department. And then our special ed, they, they started meeting on a weekly basis in August. Then now they moved to a monthly meeting to see exactly what we can do to, to get those vacancies down and really keep our, keep our IAs. So, that number from sixty-nine on October one, now it is down to twenty-three as of December first. So, what that group is doing is working tremendously. Our building ops is sitting at two vacancies and administrative assistants is still at zero. And then our other is down, down to three. So, with that concerted effort of focusing on our classified staff, those, everything's coming to fruition and it's working. I want to end on, well, just my part, not the staffing part, is the, our class sizes. At the high school, we're sitting at twenty-three point one. At the middle school, we're sitting at sixteen point four. In elementary, we're sitting fifteen point five. Please understand that this is just an average, that the actual class size really depend on the grade level and enrollment and whatnot. So, we have some classes, like at the high school at Fleming and PH, are sitting at thirty-two, thirty-three. At elementary, we have some grade levels, like at Monterey, sitting at twenty-three, twenty-four. So, again, this is an average when you look at us across the vision, looking at high school, middle school, and elementary. So, I will pause there and see if there was, see if you guys have any questions about the data.
On this side.
Okay, she's standing over.
Ms. Trigg.
I'd like to say, great job.
Thank you.
For your numbers, I know you're working hard. And I was looking at this middle school and I was thinking, whoo, because seventh grade in Brigadier.
Oh, oh, classes are huge, yes, yeah. I saw it said average. Yes, yes, yes.
But great job overall.
Thank you.
Excellent. I still go back to the little folder that we had, Eli, that had. Challenge. The challenge you had when you came in.
I loved it though, I loved every minute of it.
Exceptional, exceptional work of the teams. The question that I have is, when I think about all of the work that you guys have had to do to try to bring people back in from losses, do you know about how many losses total there have been from October to December? That's, it, what, what you explained sound like a lot of people. And that's concerning to me that, because we, we were the place to be.
Yes.
Right? Everybody was coming from different divisions, wanting to be on this train. Am I to feel like the high is over and we're struggling to compete?
It's a little bit of concern because, and there's many different variables. People are leaving because of, because of, you know, mental health. They're leaving because of student discipline, many different variables in terms of why they're leaving. We typically average about twenty-five teachers we lose on a year, in a year. So, as of October one, that is kind of high. So, we're monitoring to see what we can do. Whenever we find out that they are going to resign, we do try to reach out to the principal to see if they, we can re-recruit them. Is there anything we can do to have them un-resign? But it is, yes, yes, yes. But, but we do keep track. We have exit, sort of exit interviews as well, as to where to see exactly what's going on. But it's, it's a multitude of reasons. They're not going to other schools, because what we do is we have a gentleman's agreement in Virginia. If you're under contract after June fifteenth, you have to get permission from us to, to interview. So, we don't have people leaving from us going to other schools. Sometimes they're just going out of education completely.
Wow. I do know also that the, and the research will bear out that there are a lot of, and you'll see this when, when Mr. McKee talked about the provisionally certified teachers. There are several teachers who are entering the profession now who are not taking a traditional pathway. And therefore, there's a, there's, there's a steep learning curve coming in. So, a lot of times you'll see that these vacancies are due to folks who have not had a traditional pathway, have not had a student teaching experience, maybe, you know, have come in and then had that steep learning curve and then choosing other, another path or, and they also have personal reasons and other kinds of things. Discipline sometimes will show up there as well and support. So, I applaud the HR team and our principals as well to try to meet teachers where they are, even if they've had a non-traditional pathway to teaching. I think you mentioned that to us before about people coming from other careers.
And, and to add to that, we have the, the mentor program, as I mentioned before. But we also want to add that wraparound support. So, one thing we're working on is, is starting in January, February, we want to, those new teachers that are new to the profession, that only have a bachelor's or maybe have ITEACH, we want to pull them out of the classroom for two or three days, not in a row, but throughout the semester to, to give them that, that support they didn't have coming, because they didn't have educational background. So, but we have to weigh that, okay, we pull them out, we'll be able to find a sub and whatnot. So, we have to wait, I'm doing six, seven again, I'm sorry. But, but we're trying to plan ahead and make sure that we get ahead of this. So, that's something that we're, that's on our radar as well.
Is that a national trend too?
Yes, yes. There, there's still not enough people going into education, getting educational degree and coming into teaching. So, that's why you see a lot of school divisions looking at alternative pathways. And we've latched on to ITEACH and local license to help us bridge that gap.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This side, anyone?
I just wanted to say.
Let Ms. Kintana go first, go ahead.
Okay, sorry.
You're good.
Why here? I just want to say thank you, Mr. McKee, because I know it's a lot. And you guys are amazing. Appreciate all the work you do.
Thank you.
Me and your doctor, I don't want to.
You don't have, you don't have to say anything. That was not intended to come off snarky. No, you're, it's not requisite that you have comments.
I do have comment.
Yes, sir.
On all of the, well, most of the preceding slides before this, I can remember, it's easy to see the target is zero vacancies.
Yes.
I'm curious, I've been staring at this, to put this into context, what are our targets for average class size?
Usually about twenty-one, twenty-two is the target. Of course, we like to get a lot lower than that, but that's.
At all age groups or does it?
Well, you have to have like K through three, you, there are certain numbers, like the nineteen to twenty-two. Depends on which school and Title I and whatnot. So, at K through three, they have to have nineteen to twenty to depend on the school. But we're looking at really eighteen, nineteen to be at that sweet spot in terms of what we're looking at class averages.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think it's, thank you for this. I mean, Ms. Watkins asked a lot of the questions I was going to ask and also gave me the little flashback of where we started. So, having this clarity of data is really helpful. I think, so my questions are, and I would like to take a minute, we're, I'm going to ask a question also about kind of turnover in these questions, because that's what we've talked about. And I think to your point, turnover is normal in any organization. I mean, the question becomes, when do we end up in flux and beyond what we expect? So, and I'm glad you're looking into all of the things that you said about kind of the churn rates and the accelerated pace of all that. I guess, and I think that, I think that I just heard the answer to one of my two questions, which is, one hundred and sixty-seven professional teachers is both a success and a concern.
Yes.
Okay. So, that's, that's what I kind of noted here. On, on that, so this is just a third, so I'll look forward to seeing what we're doing about all that. You mentioned ESS, you know, with our substitute teachers. Does our substitute teacher, teachers are pipeline into employment?
Oh, yes, yes. We, we, we recruit from ESS as well. Like if they have a bachelor's degree and they want to teach, I, I want to say we had eight or nine ESS subs become teachers as well. So, yes, that is a pipeline. But then when we still, from then, then we, then they have less people as well. It's like Rob and Peter, I'm doing six, seven again, okay.
Do we have, do we, and I assume a lot of those teachers become provisional, provisionally licensed.
Yes.
I'm wondering, when they're a substitute teacher, are they getting, I'm thinking about that learning curve question. I'm pretty old now, so I remember substitute teachers pretty much just.
You're Gen Z.
Huh?
You're Gen Z.
Oh, that's cute. And, no, I talk to them all day. I love them. Thank you. The, is there, what I'm wondering about through our ESS, who's a wonderful partner, this isn't a critique, is there something more we should be thinking about with our substitute teachers that helps them really experience a more realistic job preview than what we do now? Right? I mean, if we're thinking they're provisionally licensed and we think there's some additional churn that comes out of that, I'm wondering if there's something that we can do, not to scare them away, but to, to not make the shock value so big when they come through, so.
That's something that we can look at. But the, the positive part is that, is that they're already in our building, so they know what to expect in terms of climate and culture. So, we can definitely work with the.
Paperwork.
No, they don't, they don't, no, they don't.
And they shouldn't have to, it's just, it's a mentoring question, I think I'm asking.
That's something that we can work with ESS to look into, how do we bridge that gap? It'll be in the book next year, just to let you know.
I'll be watching from Zoom.
We'll mail you a book, just in case.
Thanks, thank you.
Or staffing report.
Before I ask my question, definitely thank you for this information so far. I do look forward to hearing from the rest of the team. But again, this is incredible data and definitely gives us a perspective on where we are. My biggest question, I know we're all talking about turnover, but I also wanted to bring up absenteeism. Do you think, because you, you mentioned this, do you think that has a lot to do with the shift in age demographics?
It's a loaded question, Mr. Cherry. Now, I, I think there's a lot of different factors that go into why people are missing. It could be FMLA, it could be mental health, it could be a lot of different things. So, I don't know if there's one right answer to what. But I think what, what, what will come of this, we're going to look at that teacher task, absenteeism task force. Hopefully, they will give us answers in terms of why are people missing? Because they are boots on the ground, so to speak. And so, we're looking to get information directly from teachers, though they'll be on that committee as well.
Yeah. And, I mean, again, just speaking to that, I know when I first came on the board, we were heavy with the great resignation. Then now, we're really talking about job hugging. So, now we have a generation, I don't mean to speak for my culture, but that's, that's my age demographic. But we do have a, a age demographic to where, as long as we got the job,
Yes.
we will do the bare minimum as long as we keep the job. So, just wanted to see what type of avenues, what are we doing? I know we have mentorships, we have all of that. But I know as a millennial and even the Gen Z's, I just wanted to make sure that we are kind of putting our foot in their, in their perspective, to kind of see what they need and what's doable for us as a division going forward. I think that'll really help us as an urban school division. So, just wanted to throw that out there.
Yes, sir, it'll be in the book next year.
And I would say that, you know, thank you for that question. I know that, and I want to thank our, the REA, we meet with the REA monthly. And I, just in, in talking with them, as well as talking with teachers as we visit schools, I, I don't think that we should be naive about what our teachers face on a daily basis. And that particularly when you've chosen to serve in urban school division, then again, we, we love serving in urban school division. Our students are beautifully diverse, but with that diversity comes additional challenges that their fellow teachers may not, may or may not necessarily have to deal with in other divisions. That means pouring your whole self into the work that you do. That means additional planning. It means additional kind of love and, and care and support. And sometimes, working with families at a different level, that takes a toll sometimes. And so, I do, when we talk to the REA, they, they're talking about things like building in PTO time or building in mental health days or providing that type of balance. So, I think as we look forward to the next, you know, kind of budget season and those kinds of things, we need to listen to that, to those concerns and take into consideration the real demands on our teachers on a daily basis and recognize and appreciate what they're up against every single day. And, and see that, because it's a, it's a domino effect. So, then as a teacher, once that my next door neighbor teacher is out and if I'm having to take on that teacher's workload, then that's an additional strain on me. And then therefore, I'm more likely to be absent the next day or the, you know, next week. So, there is a domino effect. And I do think that we need to, again, I'm, I'm grateful for the partnership that we have with the REA. I'm grateful for the Teachers Advisory Council, because they're bringing these real issues to us. And thanks to our human resources departments and our principals, because as we're hearing that, then we can then do something about it. But I thought I'd take a minute to share that feedback with you, because that's what we're hearing. And I think we need to acknowledge that particularly.
Thank you so much. And that's so important, even as a young leader.
Yes.
I'm getting it almost every day at, at my own job, where it's like, hey, Mike, I just need a day.
Yes, yes, yes.
And if that means I need to be off.
Yes, yes.
That's why we get paid to figure that out, right, as leaders. So, thank you all so much for addressing that. That's something that I definitely am sensitive to, so thank you all.
Can I just add, Dr. White reminded me that the RA meeting, we had an aha moment. And we got a compliment as well as a suggestion. So, what one of the members said was like, you guys do a great job with the new teachers and make sure they have the support they need. You do a great, great, great job with the retirees, but what about us in the middle? And I was like, aha. So, we want to figure out ways how we can appreciate our, our staff that've been here sixteen, seventeen years and show them gratitude of what they do. So, that's something we're working on as well.
And they're grateful, we, you know, we talked about that. That's what they're speaking of, just in addition to.
Yes.
The pay recognition.
Yes.
So, the, the, you know, no one discounts the, the, the power of that pay recognition and they appreciate that. We talked about how we moved the entire scale up a few years ago, fourteen percent for our teachers, so that we could be competitive in the region. And so, they're, they're appreciative of that, but they said, in addition to that,
Yes, yes.
what other types of incentives, recognition, attendance incentives can we build into place? Again, that's going to take funding and, and sustainable funding to be able to do that so that we can keep those promises to our teachers. But it is something that I think we should look forward to, as particularly as we're previewing the budget for the next season.
And Ms. Trigg, you had one more thing?
I did. And I'm glad that Mr. Cherry and Dr. White brought that up. I wanted to know what type of culture may be in the schools with the teachers that may have the more absenteeism? Is there any kind of, like you said, incentives would be a great idea. May not be monetary, because you know, that's a little narrow for us. But even if it's like coffee on Friday or donuts or something like that, and that may say minute, but sometimes teachers look forward to that, just a small little reward. Or even a, what, employee of the week or something like that. And just to find ways that they probably could boost the morale within the school. Because where I may not be fitting in in one school or another school, I might excel. So, it may be some different cultures that are going on there. I don't know how easy that would be to figure out, but that may be something that could help.
I think one part would be that the teacher absenteeism task force, they will help with looking at the climate and culture within their buildings. We're really going to try to look at, to make sure we have a teacher on there that's from a hard-to-fill school. I know they don't speak for the entire school, but they can give us perspective in terms of what that will look like and what incentives they would need in terms of to, to keep them coming, you know, especially on Fridays and Mondays. And after tech games, people get the hokey flu and everything like that. So, we're just trying to figure out things, you know, they never miss an OU game, so I don't know why.
I mean, Elon's going to send it of decorate their classroom for the next year, whatever they get to choose. I mean, just something like that, I think anything could possibly help.
Yes, yes.
Thank you for all that, Mr. McKee. And I'll, I do look forward to, you know, hearing updates throughout the year about that teacher absenteeism.
Yes.
Task force. I did want to note that I, one of the things that I do love, that I've really seen evolve, even just during my time on the board, is that there are multiple opportunities for professional growth for all of our employees, so that employees really do have the opportunity to find meaning in their job within RCPS in lots of ways, whether that's upward mobility, maybe that's from IA to TA to teacher, to admin and so on, or whether that's as a mentor. And, and I also, I don't know if you're going to toot your horn about your mentor numbers or not, but, but the, the retention numbers.
I'm keeping my hands down.
There's, there's the retention of the mentees, which means we're supporting our new teachers. But the retention of the mentors is also very high. So, the mentors find meaning by doing that work too. And I don't know how many stay interviews you manage to get for your IAs, since that seems to be one of our weak points. But I'd be curious, I don't know, you know, if there's, if it's worth it all, you know, mentors for other. if there's, if it's worth it all, you know, mentors for other subgroups as well.
That slide is forthcoming, so we have information as well.
Great, okay.
All right, so I'll turn it over to Ms. Bailey and she'll, she'll talk about our retention and recruitment efforts. And then she'll turn it over to Ms. Gates and she'll talk about our professional growth.
Thank you, Mr. McKee. Good evening.
Good evening.
So at RCPS, people are at the heart of everything we do, from those who serve our students every day to those who, for those we're working to attract to our community. Tonight, I'm excited to share our story. It's a story of people, purpose, and the intentional work that is elevating recruiting and retention at RCPS. Okay, so at RCPS, recruitment isn't just a once a year task. It's year-round, all hands on deck commitment. We often say it because we truly believe it. Everyone is a recruiter. Filling vacancies and meeting the needs of our students requires collaboration at every level, from HR to school administrators to supervisors, staff, and our higher education and community partners. Each play a critical role in attracting and retaining exceptional talent. While we continue to use a multi-channel recruitment strategy, our focus remains clear and consistent, building strong relationships long before positions open. Applicants find RCPS in many ways, through digital campaigns, social media, community, community partners, and word of mouth. But our strongest and most meaningful connections still come from personal engagement. Before going further, I would love to recognize our marketing department. Thank you, Claire, and your entire team for keeping RCPS visible, vibrant, and competitive. Your work continues to drive results. Over the past two years, our proactive online campaigns, targeted ads, and website engagement have supported more than 10,000 applications. It's over the last two years. Our teacher job fair continues, or continued to provide candidates with early access to interviews, helping us to identify strong talent sooner in the hiring cycle. So new for 2024 and 2024, '25 school year, we had the RCPS interview fair. We welcomed 158 attendees, which resulted in 34 accepted offers, which was our strongest fair yet and a clear indicator that this model is working. We expanded our reach through walk-up Wednesdays hosted at local libraries and now the Community Empowerment Center. We have held nine of these events so far with seven more scheduled through March, including our next session tomorrow, if you're not busy, December 10th from 1:00 to 3:00 at the Community Empowerment Center. Of course, everyone is welcome and Morgan Strather is doing such a great job with that. Our licensure coordinator, Angela Carr, has completed 70 preliminary licensure reviews. By guiding candidates through step-by-step requirements, she directly contributed to the hiring of 25 new teachers. All of these efforts propel Pathway 4 forward by strengthening our talent pipeline, streamlining hiring, and building a workforce that truly reflects and serves our community. You can find more details on pages 10 through 21 of the staffing report. Before we shift to retention, we do want to highlight a key challenge. We've noticed that a lot, not a lot, but some of our classified applicants are running into roadblocks with the application system. In response, we've expanded personalized guidance. This is supported by Victoria Thornton and members of our HR team. We've added a hands-on approach to help every candidate successfully complete their application. So this could be a language barrier, this could be a technology barrier. People are coming in and needing help and we're meeting them where they, where they need us to be. And we're not going to stop there. We are going to continue to enhance these supports. Our ongoing goal is to simplify and speed up the hiring process, making it clearer, more intuitive, and more efficient as we work to reduce the time to fill and deliver an exceptional candidate experience. Now let's shift to the retention rates. This is an area where RCPS continues to truly shine. The data found on page 41 of the staffing report shows strong competitive retention rates that reflect real stability in our workforce. Teacher retention has risen to 89%, matching our highest level in five years and surpassing the national urban district average by seven points. Right? Our professional staff retention is also holding steady at 89%, marking a promising rebound after last year's unusually high turnover. Administrator retention remains in the mid to upper 80s, which much of that movement representing happy turnover, which means promotions, career advancement, and retiree, retirements, which all of these signal a healthy internal pipeline. Classified retention is at 85%, well above the urban averages and significantly higher than the lows of 2021, '22 school year, demonstrating that our targeted supports are making a meaningful difference. Overall, RCPS continues to outperform other school divisions because our employees are choosing to stay. A special thank you to John Michael Deeds for his impactful work in employee relations, which has significantly contributed to these outcomes. Together, these results demonstrate that we're creating a positive and supportive environment that keeps people engaged in the long term, and we are just getting started. Our goal is to boost overall retention by 15% by 2027. Okay, so this year, our retention work, our retention work focused on strengthening the systems that matter most to employees because leadership matters. We made a major investment in supervisor training to ensure consistent expectations and stronger support for staff across the division. This included enhanced FMLA training delivered by our FMLA specialist, Melissa Hensley. Our referral program continued to reinforce both recruitment and retention with 151 referrals resulting in 102 hires. Demonstrating employees' confidence in RCPS as a great place to work. Through radar meetings, we identified staffing needs early and provided targeted support to principals. Thank you to Dr. Shawanda Jackson for leading that effort, or this effort. Insights from stay and exit interviews echoed a clear trend. Supportive leadership remains one of the strongest drivers of retention, underscoring the importance of continued leadership development. Okay, let's talk about open enrollment a little bit. So this year, we didn't just update our open enrollment process, we reimagined it from the ground up. We shifted from a passive to active enrollment and it has been nothing short of transformational. I had the privilege of leading this initiative alongside our phenomenal benefits coordinator, Celeste Brown. And together, our whole HR team and our board set an ambitious goal. We wanted to ensure that every benefit-eligible employee would be able to sit down for a personalized one-on-one session with a licensed benefit counselor. And our employees showed up. So far, over 2,100 employees have participated. This is a huge level of engagement. These conversations empowered staff to truly understand their benefits, compare options with confidence, and make the best choices for themselves and their families. And a special thanks to RCPS leaders, administrators, principals, managers, supervisors, just for helping out with reserving rooms for your employees to meet with people, providing subs and things like that so that open enrollment could happen without a hitch. This is more than just an operational win. It's a cultural shift and one of the most impactful steps forward we've taken in benefits education. Our comprehensive benefit package remains competitive in the region, directing, directly supporting Pathway 4 and our commitment to offering high-quality compensation and benefits. Another course, another cornerstone of retention is cultivating professional growth and celebrating excellence. These efforts keep our staff motivated, inspired, and committed. And at the heart of it all is a, is one simple truth, leadership matters. This year, we expanded leadership development opportunities for teachers and aspiring administrators, helping them envision long-term career pathways within RCPS. And Carrie Gates will go a little deeper into that. HR, our HR team, we created a Paraeducator 1, 2, and 3 pathway to support instructional assistance with structured development and advancement. While implementation was delayed due to budget constraints, it remains a priority for the future. Our recognition programs continue to elevate excellence across the division. Employees consistently tell us that feeling valued and supported is one of the biggest reasons they stay at RCPS, which is why both formal recognition and everyday appreciation remain central to our culture. In addition to Teacher of the Year and Support Staff of the Year, we introduced new recognitions for Principal of the Year, Assistant Principal of the Year, and Central Office Leaders of the Year. Once again, and throughout all of this work, leadership matters and it continues to be a huge driver of employee satisfaction. And now I'm pleased to hand it over to Carrie Gates, Executive Director of Professional Learning. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Ms. Bailey, I'm not going to mention which generation I'm a part of, but. So Mr. McKee shared the status of our workforce and then Ms. Bailey provided an overview of recruitment and retention. And then tonight, I'm just going to highlight four key areas that support these efforts through professional growth. And so beginning on page 68 of our staffing report, you're going to find all of our professional learning offerings, course descriptions, the alignment to the strategic plan, and of course, all of the information about our wonderful instructors. And so the first area I want to talk to you about tonight is new employee support because starting strong matters. And so research shows effective onboarding increases retention by reducing early turnover. And so new this year, instructional assistants now receive role-specific training during new hire orientation. We also restructured new administrator orientation to include an introduction to our community, the students we serve, and essential leadership knowledge. And this is not just for our principals and assistant principals, but for any leaders we get throughout the year. Teachers attend new educator orientation and receive ongoing support throughout the year through our Great Beginnings Mentoring Program. And then every new teacher, whether they have 24 years or four years, is paired with a site-based mentor. Last year, we extended that support to second-year teachers. This year, we've extended it to our third-year teachers. And yes, Ms. Apel, I am going to toot our horn about our mentoring program. So currently, we have 116 mentors that support 266 teachers. This is a huge investment in the success of our teachers. And when we surveyed our mentees last spring, 94% of them said that they were either satisfied or very satisfied with the support they received from their mentor. And that's just an incredible number. Studies confirm the mentoring programs build teacher capacity and commitment, which are linked to retention. While mentoring alone doesn't guarantee retention, it is a critical factor. And so we do, in the third year of this program, we are tracking retention rates. Last year, 93% of our mentors and 81% of our mentees stayed within Roanoke, whereas the year before, we had 92 that stayed and 79 that stayed. So we are just very fortunate to have such an incredible group of mentors in this division. They are very dedicated and they are doing important work. I just want to share a fast story. We were doing a mentor professional learning last Thursday. Of course, you know what Friday was. And so in the middle of our professional learning, we received a phone call and the whole room erupted into cheers and the, the snow day phone call. They erupted into cheers, they started doing the way, but then they got back to the work of, really quickly, of talking about how they could support new teachers. And that just really talks about how committed they are. So I just want to acknowledge that. I also wanted to acknowledge our Great Beginnings Leadership Team, April Coats and Lori Seidel, for the wonderful work they do with mentor professional learning in ensuring we remain with our objectives and intended purpose. Oh, skip that, okay. So a strategy in our strategic plan is supporting career advancement growth opportunities. And this is important for keeping great people in Roanoke City. And I just want to share a few examples. Last year, I told you about the one apprentice that just was graduating and we hired them at Hurt Park. Well, this year, we are, we have two new apprentices at Hurt Park. One was an instructional assistant last year and then the other was a William Fleming graduate. Both are on track to now becoming teachers. In May of 2026, as part of the Radford Administrative Cohort, 14 teachers and staff will graduate with their master's degree in educational leadership, positioning them to become principals or other leaders within our division. And yes, we did have them sign a stay agreement, so we will retain them. And so a unique feature of this cohort is that some of our, our CPS leaders teach this course. For example, in the Supervision and Evaluation Course that's taught by Dr. Williams this semester, members of our HR team were asked to come in and talk about performance management, leadership culture and climate, and professional development. So building our principal pipeline was identified as a need. To address this, we launched the Aspiring Principals Program with 14 principals and leaders completing a year-long program to strengthen the skills they need to become principals within Roanoke City. And also, we have a partnership with VCU and we have two staff members that are completing an aspiring administrator program there as well. Another strategy we have within the professional growth is to advance mentoring programs and leadership development. This past summer, 172 school and division leaders, including our building managers, for the first time ever, came together for our leadership conference. Topics included strategic thinking, change management, conflict resolution, skills that are all essential for a strong leadership. And then research shows that developing teacher leaders helps with teacher retention. Our mentoring program plays a key role in building that leadership capacity. So during our November professional learning session, mentors brought a real classroom management challenge to the table. Our leadership team introduced a consultancy process framework. Then we got out of the way, we stepped back, and we allowed our mentors to share their expertise with each other and collaborate on solutions. Targeted opportunities are role-specific. From some of our school climate data, we learned our employees wanted more consistent and effective feedback. As a deck, as a direct result of this information, managing employees was developed and offered to strengthen skills in this area. All of our supervisors that evaluate employees, including our building managers, participated in this session. We offer professional learning to all staff, including our classified employees. Examples include Copilot, Canva, and Excel. These were all top requests from our educational needs, needs assessment from our classified staff. And then on my last slide, there's just some feedback about what some of our employees are saying. I won't read that all to you, but you can read that. But we do get some positive feedback and we do go through and review the surveys from all of our sessions. And so I appreciate this opportunity this evening to share some of the good work that is being done by many to support our recruitment and retention efforts. And then I will turn it back over to Mr. McKee to close out our presentation.
Just want to see if there's any additional questions.
I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. White, for your leadership and thank you, Board, for your commitment to our employees and students. And just appreciate that all you guys do to allow us to do what we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKee, and thank you to the team. Thank you. All right, moving on to our SPSF update. Just today, the Virginia Department of Education released the School Performance and Support Framework, which we call SPSF. They released those results publicly. And as you know, we had originally expected this information to be released by the end of September. Last, just late last week, the VDOE shared that.
Just late last week, the VDOE shared that the results were available for school divisions to review and that they would be publicly released today. So our Office of Accountability and Strategic Initiatives, or our OASIS team, has been diligent in reviewing and analyzing the results quickly. So as you will hear, they have already identified some discrepancies there, so we do plan to provide a more detailed report at your January workshop. But in the spirit of transparency, we wanted to share the initial information that we have. Since it was just released at 2:00 today, we wanted to get the information to you and to the public as soon as we could. So what you will hear from our OASIS team is that while our schools have been making progress, many of our schools, like many across the Commonwealth, have been labeled as off-track or needs intensive support under the new labeling system. And these labels do come with additional opportunity for funding and support, which we are grateful to the VDOE for and for making those resources available to us. It's important to state clearly that our CPS continues to grow and make academic progress. The new framework does not tell the full story, which you'll hear in just a minute. So we will continue updating the school board and the public on our progress as we have done throughout this school year. Now, this evening, families will receive a letter from me. I believe they already have. Yes, they already have. Will receive a letter from me with information about the SPSF and what these results mean, because, again, transparency is a priority and has been a priority of this administration since the beginning. So we will continue to work with our schools and families to help them understand the new system. And at this time, we have Dr. Jonathan Schultz, our Executive Director of Accountability and Strategic Initiatives, and Melissa Eckert, who is our Assistant Director of Accountability and Strategic Initiatives, to provide additional details. So I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Schultz.
Dr. White. Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the Board. We are here to provide the latest update on the Virginia Department of Education School Performance and Support Framework. We have been coming to you, if you recall, over the last 15 months, since we heard about the new changes that were coming to the accountability and accreditation system, to try to keep everybody in the division and on the board informed as to what those changes were going to be. That started back at the September 24 board meeting, where we introduced the fact that they were planning to separate the accountability and accreditation systems. In October of 2024, we introduced you to the different categories and framework components and how the scores were going to be calculated for the schools. We shared the projections with you based on the previous year's data in February, and we came back to you in September and just kind of reminded everyone about the process and shared the VDOE release timeline. In October, we spent quite a while working together on the complexities of the federal identification process, which you'll hear a little more about again tonight, and its impact and ramifications for the schools. And tonight, we're here to share the accountability and accreditation results. So I'll turn it over to Melissa Eckert, our Assistant Director, who will take us through the VDOE timeline.
So, last year, the VDOE introduced the new accountability system, and our team worked to stay on top of the evolving business rules as they developed the system over several months. This year, they were expected to release the results, as we know, in September, but that release was paused due to data discrepancies that were being reported across the state. So what they did instead was they started to release batches of preliminary reports for divisions to review behind the scenes. So my team analyzed each of these batches of reports and notified the VDOE of over 100 corrections. They also had a third party validate their data, so ODU spent a few months in that process. And when that was complete, they released the results to divisions on December 3rd. And then, despite ongoing data concerns and repeated assurances that we would have at least one week for review, they released the results publicly today. So as I mentioned, we found over 100 discrepancies in the VDOE's reports. And so, those discrepancies included issues between their data and our data, as well as discrepancies within their own data, within their own reports. And so, we kept a log of every correction that we submitted, which helped us confirm whether or not that concern had been addressed in the next batch of reports. So here, we're just giving you a glimpse into the error log to kind of give you an idea of the scale of the problem and to show how almost all of our schools were affected. And we also wanted to note, in that red box area, you can see that we were still finding discrepancies in the final reports that were released last week.
If you remember, back at the beginning, part of the process that the VDOE was going through was to separate the accountability and accreditation systems, essentially wanting to keep those two things separate. So we can start by sharing that, based on the accreditation piece, all schools in Roanoke City are fully accredited for this year, which means... That means that we successfully dotted all the i's, crossed all the t's, and handled everything well in terms of operating our schools effectively. Basically, that means that we meet everything that was in the Code of Virginia that we required to make sure happens. On the accountability side, this is where the School Performance and Support Framework comes in. As we've talked to you several times before, essentially, the way that the system is built is for schools to earn points or score points based on various aspects of student performance, primarily the SOL tests are a big piece of it, but it also includes a growth measurement, chronic absenteeism, and some other pieces that we have talked about in the past. And then, the VDOE will label schools based on the points that they earn. So schools with 90 points and above will be labeled distinguished. Schools scoring in the 80s would be labeled on-track. Schools scoring between 65 and 79 would be labeled off-track, and schools scoring below 65 points would be labeled as needs intensive support. However, I would draw your attention again to what we talked about at your October meeting, which is that line underneath the table, which indicates that if a school is federally identified as needing, being eligible to receive targeted support for an individual group of, individual student group, then that school automatically has their performance category lowered by a level. We've expressed our concerns to you about that decision that the VDOE has made. The primary concern from a data standpoint is that's the piece of data that we have not been able to see throughout the entire three-month process, and the first time we got to see it was Wednesday night. So that is a bit of a concern with all of the other data pieces, data questions that we've had in that background piece. In addition, we've talked before about the fact that that identification is based on choosing a school in the state and the characteristics of that school at that certain percentile, and that next year, that will be a different school. So trying to hit the targets, trying to have a moving target there is going to be an interesting challenge for our schools to face. So with that said, this chart shows the, basically, hot-off-the-press results for each school. You can see the schools in the left-hand column, and column two shows the framework score for each school. You can see that we have schools that scored in the 90s, 80s, and 70s. All of our schools scored at least 70 points or higher, which, as you can see in the second category, should have put everybody as either distinguished, on-track, or off-track. However, we did have eight schools who were identified as needing additional support, targeted support for the performance of a group of students, and so those eight schools had their performance category lowered according to the rule we were just mentioning. So, again, we're just trying to provide a very high-level overview tonight based on the short time that we had to prepare. But the initial claim from the VDOE was that the previous accountability system was complicated, it was hard to understand, and that it likely over-inflated or over-reported levels of school success throughout the state, because there were not very many schools that were not accredited every year based on that system. So their proposal was to replace it with a system that the claim was that it would be simple, it would be easy to understand, and very easy to work with. Over the course of the past year, I think we've learned that the SPSF is far from simple or easy to understand. When you get under the hood, the data and the calculations are actually far more complex than the old system. So if you recall, when, first time I came to you to talk about data in September 24, we said, "We promise that we will make sure that everybody understands the new system and how it works," but that our best bet moving forward was to make sure that we took the opportunity to hold ourselves accountable. And that's what we did, the way we built the redesign of the strategic plan, and that was to focus on our SOL scores, not our, not adjusted SOL scores, not with anything in them, but just our straight pass rates. And as we showed you in September, our schools are heading in the right direction in terms of academics. So we stop there and leave time for questions.
And before I open it up, four questions. I also want to note that they've only been able to sit with this data for a very, I don't even think you're at double digits of days, correct?
8:20 PM on Wednesday, we got an email that said, "Hey, you got it today."
8:20 PM.
8:20 PM on Wednesday, because they wanted to make it.
And also, so this was released for transparency purposes, but also, please note that this will be subject of future agendas to delve into this more. And before there's any other questions, I did want to, I wanted to make sure I was correct in what I saw on one of the slides, is that I know on the log, there were corrections being made as of December 3rd. Are there, is it, but somewhere else it said ongoing, are there still corrections being found in the data as of today?
So we did go through all of the reports last Thursday and submitted all of the discrepancies that we found. However, those corrections that we submitted were not reflected in the public release today.
Okay, so, and as far as we know, so then you'd have to get the corrected ones back to then check again and see if there's any further corrections. So, okay.
Just highlight that process a little bit. So apparently, the VDOE was receiving so many corrections that they put a form up that said, "You have to submit the correction through the form," to which they never respond. They don't acknowledge that they've received it, and they don't tell you if you fixed it. So what our team has had to do is just check every day to see if there's an update and check to see if the correction has been made, or, so we don't know if the correction was, if they disagreed, or if they just hadn't looked at it yet. And they also didn't tell you when the updates were coming, so you just have to kind of go in and check every day to see if it's been fixed. So I suspect that they're a little overwhelmed at this point, so I'm not sure how quickly we'll hear back on those current ones.
Thank you. So I will open it to this side first. Does anyone have any questions at this time, knowing that we will delve into this a lot more deeply at a future meeting?
All I want to say is thank you, because I know it's frustrating, and, yeah, it's frustrating, so thank you.
Yeah, I would just, thank you with four workdays. One of them was supposed to be a snow day, two of them were supposed to be snow days, so thank you for getting this amount of work turned around in a very short period of time. I think this system is a little mind-numbing when you think about the extrapolation of some of the data, which I'm sure we'll talk about later. So, thanks for your hard work on this.
On this side, Ms. Gergen, Ms. Watkins?
I just want to clarify one thing. I just want to hear it again, so that I'm sure I understand. And I know you said this before. I know you said this before to us, and we went through a whole exercise where you...
Oh, yeah.
Illustrated how complicated this is, but said that if a subgroup did not perform well, that changed, that reduced the level for the entire school. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cherry?
I'm going to hold my question. I guess, wondering if there are any schools that improve, you know, from that, but I'll hold it for, as we continue to discuss.
We, as soon as we have a chance to go deeper, we know we have some successes to share out of those in some of the individual pieces. We know we have Lucy Addison, for example, is going to have some good stuff come out of this as well, but we're not at a point where we can, here's all the pieces, and we don't want to miss anything.
Okay, so I'll save mine. Thank you.
And I did want to note, or make sure that I am understanding correctly, to piggyback off what Ms. Watkins brought up. So our schools can be, any school division or school can be dropped a level if, in comparison to the base school, we have scored below them in any subgroup. But what I wanted to make sure that I understood is, the base school is determined based on how they scored overall compared to the whole state, which every time a correction is found, changes.
Well, so I think at this point, they're going to lock it in at that level, but yes, my understanding is that part of the reason it was delayed is that as errors were found and scores changed, the school that was being used as the baseline school most likely was changing, which then changes the list of schools across the state who would be identified based on relative to that school, because it's very specific to that school as the target school.
Though corrections could change the base school, which could change the subgroup comparisons, which could change our, you know, ratings, if you will. So I just wanted to clarify that I had that correct. And then, yes, oh, sorry, it was just sigh. And then, I just also wanted to note, as you said it, but I just also wanted to point it out, that we have schools that are federally identified. That means we get extra support for those schools. I just have to say, it feels like a punishment that our, that schools get dropped a level simply because they've been identified as getting extra supports. If they are, you know, I have a philosophy about what assessments should tell you, and if they are scoring a certain level by those assessments, it shouldn't matter what led to that, whether it was that you got extra supports from federally identified or EL services or whatnot. So that is just an opinion of my own. So yes, Ms. Watkins, something you wanted to mention with that.
All right, I had one last thing, and this is, this ties back to our budget and funding. I heard Dr. White say that there were opportunities for funded supports, but as I understand that, it's more of a grant and not a long-term solution. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes. That would be...
I mean, Ms. Watkins, the, we are certainly appreciative of the opportunity for resources that, additional resources that would help schools where we need.
Yes.
It's December, and whatever that process is going to be, is going to take, it has to take at least two or three months from here before we would be able to see that money, and then it would need to be spent by June 30th. So it really becomes a, yes, we're going to help you, but how's the timing going to work on that, actually being able to make an impact now?
Yeah, I mean, from a principal's perspective, and Mr. Freeman, I see you standing up back there, so why don't you come on up? But from a principal's perspective, it's really difficult. If, again, we appreciate any kind of grant funding that would come to support our students, support our schools. Half the year is already over with, right? So then, to have to spend that, there are restrictions on what you can spend the money on and the timing of it, but Mr. Freeman, I see your theory, so go ahead.
Dr. White, thank you. You said exactly right. Actually, we have just a little sneak peek today regarding the timeline, and it is a quick turnaround time. We do know, we can say that the deadline of the turnaround for the application is the end of January, but you got to go through all of the criteria, then you have to have it all encumbered. Usually, like what they did this year, it was around September, in the middle of September. So to get it this late, as Dr. White stated, and it's only used on specifics of professional development, after-school tutoring, you cannot use it in personnel unless you're paying them to stay after school and pieces like that, they have to be attached to the edifice based strategies they have in place. So there's a whole checklist that our principals will go through with our whole entire team to make sure we're in compliance. And it's only a certain amount, TSI, you get a certain amount, ATSI, a certain amount, you can get in CSI, of course. So that's where we're at.
Happy holidays.
Yes.
Exactly. I have a question. With that application, the monies, since we are ending earlier this year, does that have anything to do, or they tell us an exact date that they want us to use the monies by, or?
It's all exact date is always established for every district in the state of Virginia.
Wow, okay.
We're actually ending our regular time this year. Just short some of this.
Okay, yeah, sorry. Yeah, yeah, sorry. Yeah, sorry. We're starting earlier, we're starting earlier. We're starting earlier, we're starting earlier.
It's a short summer.
Yes, short summer.
Got it. All right. Well, thank you again very much, and I was just one other little tidbit I was gonna toss out, is there, the scores for the schools are on a scale of 100, but it isn't a true percent as a layperson or, you know, like we normally think of that, it's, you know, you can, you get 10 out of 10 questions right is a 100%, or eight out of 10 is an 80%. It's just on a scale of 100, but it's not really a true percent.
Correct. And the issue that we've talked about before with the growth, where only half of the schools connect, only half of the growth, growth points that they say are out there were actually available to schools. So while it sounds like every school could score, those, could get to those points, it was not actually possible.
Well, thank you very much, and I know that people who love data hate being rushed to get through the data, and I, I look forward to what you get to do and what you get to communicate to us about how our students are learning and how our first-tier instruction is going, once you've had some time to sit with the data. So thank you very much.
And I pray you get what you need. So errors corrected, clarity, I, you guys are really, really smart people, but your hands are tied, and I understand that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you, Dr. Schultz and Ms. Eckert. I would like to thank our entire team for your hard work, especially over the past several months, and especially over the past few days, when we had a very short turnaround time to analyze these results. And so as, as you shared, the released data still contains some inaccuracies and inconsistencies, mismatched student counts and that kind of thing. So we are, we appreciate your quick work in turning, analyzing and flagging those issues that needed to be reported, and we thank the VDOE for being receptive. We, we want them to continue to work with us and to collaborate with us, to fix those discrepancies so that we can have, again, continue to be transparent with the public and with the school board about exactly where our schools fall. And just on a side note, I guess, as you all know, Roanoke City, and you've heard me say this before, we are a beautifully diverse school division, and we're proud of our diversity, and we're proud to serve students with varying strengths, with varying needs and varying challenges, and it, it is unfortunate that the new labels that are put on schools do not capture that full picture of progress, like you saw in the last slide, that we have made gains in reading and in math, we've made gains when it comes to chronic absenteeism, we've made gains when it comes to our discipline as well. So those daily improvements highlight the hard work of our students and our staff and our families, and show that our CPS is on the right track, and it is unfortunate that the label doesn't reflect that. And so we just, I just want our teachers and our principals and our staff members to know that we see you. We see you, we appreciate you, because when you can get a label like that, it can be demoralizing, and it can be really kind of heartbreaking when you know that you are working hard every day. So I just want our staff to know that we do, we see you and we appreciate you, and we appreciate the hard work that you do every single day. I also would say that as we are preparing, I'm going to ask Mrs. Jackson to come forward to give us a preview of the 26, 27 budget, and I would say again, from my vantage point, and I'm sure from many of yours as well, this is not the time to cut the budget. This is not the time for us to cut funding. When we look at the diversity and we look at our diversity and our diverse challenges and needs, that this time, again, what this system, the new labeling system does show us, it does show us how complex our needs are, it does show us that we are not like our neighbors, it shows that we are beautifully diverse, but that we do have several challenges. And that because, you know, again, because we have those challenges and we are in a people business, we need to make sure that we're investing in our people, that we are investing in high-quality instructional materials. And again, this is not the time, this is the time for us to stand united. As Sheriff Hash said today during his swearing-in ceremony, that united we stand, divided we fall. So I think it is important for us to stand on one accord as one city with, with the same purpose of supporting our children, supporting the teachers and staff members and the adults who support our children every day, and to get behind our schools in a way that we know that we are continuing to strengthen our children so that they can graduate with a diploma and a resume. And with that, Mrs. Jackson?
Thank you very much for that introduction, and welcome. Good evening, Chair Mrs. A. Pell, Vice Chair Mr. Cherry, members of the school board, and Superintendent White. We are gonna sort of really kick off, I know we've talked about it a little bit, but thinking about our development of the next fiscal year's budget today. So I want to start with going through our timeline and share a little bit about some state-level information and budget development at that side, because of course, this will be the start of a new biennial budget at the state level, so I'll share a little bit about what that entails. So just to kind of set the stage with our timeline, so here we are at December 9th, school board meeting, Governor Youngkin's budget is supposed to be released on the 17th. We won't have, we'll, we'll get information certainly at that point with, with that release. We won't have the exact details of what does that mean for us. The Virginia Department of Education takes the information and does provide more detailed per school division to let us know exactly, you know, how that would, would translate down to each individual school division. So sometime over winter break, probably, we will get access to that information and be prepared to update you with that at the first meeting in January. Of course, General Assembly starts the middle of January through the middle of March, though that could go longer, sometimes that does get extended. And then we will talk budget pretty much at every meeting that you have for the foreseeable future, leading up to, we'll have a public hearing in February, and then request your approval preliminary, of the preliminary high-level budget. In March, we are required to provide a budget estimate to the city on or before March 15th, so that's kind of our first target date. And then, of course, we continue to keep developing the budget as we get more information from the state or the city about revenues and that sort of thing, and keep looking at our expenditure needs, ultimately, before we bring you the final detailed budget for approval in June. Of course, you do know that the city is looking at changing how they fund schools, so sometime, hopefully by January, that's sort of the last estimate that we had when we last met, that we might have some more firm information on what that might look like in terms of any final funding plans for that, so we'll be keeping our eye out for that. So let me talk a little bit about state funding and kind of some things that we're hearing out of the General Assembly. So of course, the, the General Assembly money committees have been meeting and getting information about what the, the status of funding is at the state level. So the source of this information is the House Appropriations Committee retreat that was in November, so I just wanted to give you a little idea of, of what our legislators are hearing. So the state did end fiscal '24, '25 in a good position, revenue were up about 6.1% over the prior year, so that exceeded their forecast by a little over half a billion dollars. That's certainly favorable. 312 million of that went into the state surplus, the revenue reserve. 184 million of that was set aside as a reserve for potential federal reductions. So that is funding that is, that is available, it's set aside, but that could be budgeted in the current or future years by the General Assembly. And, and the current year, so far, so good as well. Revenue growth in the first third of the year has been favorable, and actually, so much so that revenue could actually contract 1.7% for the remainder of the year, and the state could still meet budget. So that's, that's certainly a good start to the current year. So looking at sort of the, the forecast assumptions that the, the state is hearing about, this kind of shows there's an upside scenario, a baseline, and a downside scenario of possible impacting numbers and, and revenue possibilities for the state. So Virginia is forecasting to kind of look at a little more conservatively, looking at that, those downside numbers, just given uncertainties, particularly at the federal level and that sort of thing. So what does that mean? The, the forecast shared at the House Appropriations Committee retreat was the potential for about a $4.3 billion additional revenue over the next biennium, including almost a billion dollars in, in excess of what was budgeted in the current year, and then the next two years. So certainly favorable compared to the, the adopted budget that is in place at, at present in the current year. So what could that mean? That could mean some, some adjustments, that is part of what happens at this point in the year, that we don't just look at the future budgets, but we look at where are we in the current-year budget, and the governor has an option, and the General Assembly to make some changes to the current-year budget, they call it the caboose bill, to update the current budget. So there's about $2.2 billion potential that could be available to make adjustments in the current year. The, the estimates that you see here, take into consideration only using about half a billion of that in the current year, and, and also incorporating those, the 184.5 million that's set aside for the potential reduction in federal funding. So as you can see here, you know, certainly substantial revenues remaining after the current-year, the base funding, if, if this, if the state were to kind of follow this model going forward. So certainly favorable, but of course, you know, that's several billion in additional revenue above and beyond the current adopted budget in the current year, but unsurprisingly, there are, of course, substantial increased expenditures anticipated as well. So I'll just focus on those related to public education. So re-benchmarking is something that happens at the beginning of each biennium, and that's the process through which sort of the standard calculations for determining K-12 education funding are updated. So all of those formulas that the state uses to determine their funding of schools, look at things like average teacher salaries, and, and they have to take into consideration how those averages have changed. The base data that went into that two years ago was from 2022, so now they have to update it to 2024 information. They take into consideration any portion of any raise that the General Assembly might have funded through the state budget, inflationary changes, all of that gets factored in to the existing calculations. So you can see here that the estimate of what that cost will add, just with, with no changes at all to how we fund education, just making an update to the base data that those calculations are based on, we'd be looking at 426 million additional in the first year of the biennium, and just under 418 million additional in the second year. So that's something that's kind of right off, off the top, that needs to be factored in with the next state budget. Another thing that is updated every two years is the local composite index, or LCI. So that is a calculation that the state uses to determine how much of basic, you know, bottom-line education funding that they use in calculating what they'll put towards K-12 education, how much the, the state should fund versus how much the locality should fund. So generally speaking, the state looks at it and says, the state should fund about 55% of these, these basic levels of support, and the locality should fund 45%. But they use the local composite index to take into consideration that some localities have, have more ability than others. So the data that goes into determining that composite index are listed here, the true value of property, adjusted gross income for the locality, taxable retail sales, they look at our average daily membership, our student enrollment, and then the total population. So this chart that you have here just kind of gives you an idea of what has changed since two years ago, when this was updated. How much have these factors changed? The blue line is Roanoke City, the orange line is Virginia, so just to give you an idea, so the, the one that stands out most to me is true value of property. You can see we have an over 21% increase compared to two years ago, the statewide, big increase there as well, but only about a 16% increase. So you see the differences that we have experienced versus the state. So perhaps not surprisingly, based on that, our composite index for the next biennium is actually a little bit higher than what it is in the current year. So our composite index currently is 33.88%, so that is the local share, the state share is just over 66%. We go up to 35.03% in the next biennium. So it's about a 1.15 percentage points increase, and just the, the numbers that I have on here, this is just to give you kind of a sense of what could that mean? So looking at just basic aid, just that one line of state funding, and in the current year, what that's budgeted for by the state currently, if that composite index change were to be put into effect this year, that would immediately reduce that basic aid funding by almost a million dollars. So of course, there are other variables that will come into play as the state develops next year's budget, but just to, to be aware that whatever they decide is the overall funding of education, they will fund a little bit of a smaller share of that, that amount. So, so that's something we need to pay attention to, and that will impact our state funding event.
Mrs. Jackson, can I
Yes.
just make sure I'm clear? So because our city brought in more revenue in the last biennium, our state share of dollars could go down at the same time our city is cutting our education budget?
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure that's the statement.
Okay.
Okay. Another factor that significantly impacts state funding of education is our enrollment or average daily membership. It's important to point out, when I'm talking to you about, about enrollment or membership, I, I'm talking about funded average daily membership, or ADM, and I emphasize that because that's a number that the state uses to calculate the majority of the funding that they provide to school divisions. So that doesn't include every student, because sometimes the state funds certain things different ways. So the best example I can give you is preschool. We do get state funding to help offset the costs of preschool and pre-K, but that's calculated separately, that's not included in basic aid and standards of quality, and that's a separate pot, so that is excluded from this funded ADM number. So I just want to point that out, in case anybody, you know, looks at that and thinks, whoa, I thought we had over 13,000 students, you're only talking about 12-something, you know, that's the reason that this is just really talking in terms of how the state determines funding for us. So what you see here is both our fall, September 30 number, and then our, our March number. So the, the blue line is the fall membership count, and the orange line is the spring number. So both of these graphs show you the same thing, the one on the right just shows a few more years. So the one on the left is kind of the point to show you over the last decade or so what our numbers have done. But I included the one on the right just because it, it stood out to me so significantly of how much we fluctuate now compared to pre-COVID. It, it was alarming and jarring to me to see how we were pretty steady, and then ever since COVID, we have had such fluctuation up and down, as you can see there. So that just makes projecting and therefore budgeting state funding a little bit more difficult. So you can see that we went up quite a bit last year, we went down a bit in the fall of this year. So of course, we don't know spring of this year yet, but given how our numbers tend to track, that spring number is usually a bit less than the fall number, so that's what we will anticipate. So we'll have to think carefully about what number we choose to use in projecting state funding for '26, '27. So now moving on from state, just a little bit about city funding. Of course, we don't have updated information, and as I mentioned, that may be a bit delayed this year, usually we get a first look at that in the middle of December, but if council doesn't vote till maybe January or so on any changes to how they fund us, it'll probably be sometime after that that we would get an idea. But just to kind of give you a, a background of where we've been in terms of funding from schools, so we did, we're budgeted the 106.9 million in '24, '25. You'll hear a little bit more about this when we receive our audited financials later in the meeting for '24, '25 this year, but we were required to return a fund balance or funds that sort of we had in savings that prior city councils had allowed the schools to keep. So that is reflected in those financial statements, that 20.5, we weren't able to return all that we were directed to return in the memo from the mayor, because some of those funds were committed, so that's kind of a, an accounting rule, and following proper accounting and auditing procedures, that, that directive came after the end of last fiscal year, so we couldn't So we couldn't make that change as of June 30. So we will do that before the end of this fiscal year. So that's why you see that reflected there. So.
But Mrs. Jackson, if I could just interject here. However, although those funds were committed by the school board, the school board will now need to act and take action to uncommit those funds, to return those funds to the city.
That's correct, yes, to comply with that directive, yes. So.
Also, I just, while we're here, I also wanted to make sure my understanding is clear and then for the public as well. So when we say, when you say return the funds to the city, they have always been in city treasurer-controlled accounts. But they remained on our books. And I think, again, the auditor will kind of go over this. So they will not be on our books. But we could not spend that money willy-nilly just because it was on our books. We still had to go through an appropriation process to have the ability to spend it. We could not just spend it without approval and oversight, correct?
Correct. Yeah. It just sat on sort of our side of the ledger. But you're right, it's always in bank accounts that are managed by the treasurer. And all of those funds are still sitting in a bank account managed by the treasurer. So that has not changed. It's just sort of the control of those funds and the expectation of that they would, that that would be sort of a formality. They were committed to education purposes previously. Previously, that was, the intent was that that would remain the case regardless of what year they were spent in. But that is no longer the case, so.
And additionally, something that will fundamentally change that we may discuss further on at this meeting or other meetings as we go through the budget is I believe Dr. Jameson has pointed this out before is that when those monies previously remained on the schools' books, when we developed budget, I believe you stated that there has not been a single year you've been on the school board where we didn't develop a budget that pulled from some amount of fund balance to develop our overall budget for the year, whereas, including this current fiscal year. But coming on.
In order to maximize efficiency and effectiveness while minimizing risk.
And so this will be the first year that, and again, then that budget would be developed. It'd still have to go to the city to get approved. But this will be the first year that there will be no squish, if you will, for us to delve into if our needs-based budget, if there's not enough support from state and federal and local revenues. So, okay.
Yep, that's a good point. And sort of to that end, we were encouraged to use fund balance based in the current year to make ends meet when the city flat-funded education in the current year. So we did do that. So, you know, but it's just important to know as we're looking ahead in the development of the next year budget that, you know, at this point, we do not have indication that the almost seven millions that was reduced from city funding by that flat fund will be restored. So we're not expecting that. And a potential reduction in further funding, again, still being discussed, so nothing is final yet. But based on that, it's just important to know that we will not be in a position to continue to fund everything that is included in the '25, '26 budget beyond this year. So, you know, even if state and local funding does go up, it is, at this point anyway, it feels unlikely that that increase would be enough to continue our current level plus any additional inflationary adjustments that just naturally happen, contractual increases, that sort of thing. So that's something just that we're all going to have to kind of think about and work carefully on. I will note that we will dig into the expenditure side of the budget in earnest, really getting started at that January workshop, talking about personnel, that's the biggest part of our expenditure budget. So I just remind you and the public that that's where we'll be prepared, as we always are, to really dig into that side of the expenditures and look at what we can and can't do at that point after we hopefully will have some more information on at least the state side of what revenue may look like. So that's where we are for now. But I'm happy to take any further questions or comments.
Okay. We'll start from this side. Any questions or comments from the side at this point in the budget development from Ms. Jackson?
I have just one. But the changes to funding this year, was there also a change to how we receive our payments or when we receive, operate?
From local funding, yes.
And how did that impact?
Trying to think if that took effect this year or last year. I think this year was the first year. Previously, we received 1/12 of the budgeted funding for schools on the 15th of the month or the closest business day to it. Now we receive those funds at the end of the month. So that was, you know, kind of a, basically a two-week delay of when those funds. And then from that point forward, it's still monthly.
And did that impact anything as far as, you know, what we pay, how we pay, when we pay of our expenses? Did we have any negative, any negative impacts from that?
You know, nothing major. I mean, obviously, the interest on those funds did not happen because we had a two-week delay. So that affected a little bit of, you know, any additional income that we might have had from those funds being in a school board account to support education. But that's the main difference.
Got you. Thank you. Ms. Quintana, Mr. Link, Dr. Jameson, any questions or comments at this time?
No questions at this time. Thank you for your work.
You are amazing.
I have just a process question. Are we returning to this discussion of the vote for the uncommit?
It is not on today's agenda.
Okay, I will hold my questions then.
Thank you. Mr. Cherry?
No, just looking forward to that timeline, how we navigate through this. So thank you so much for keeping us abreast.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Okay, moving on to our next.
Stay right here.
That's right.
An update on the true-up funding application.
Sure. And so I know in the local funding policy that is in place currently for the current year, or I should say for '24, '25, we do have the, we no longer are guaranteed to receive a true 40% of city funding, but we do have the ability to apply to the city for up to 40% of any positive variance between actual local tax revenue and what was originally budgeted. So we've had a lot of discussion about what we would apply for, if there are any funding funds available. We kind of tabled that discussion when we shifted our attention. So I'm delving into the next agenda item a little bit because they are related. We looked at, we really were focusing on the need for addressing overcrowding at the high schools and adding trailers there. So the more expeditious pathway felt like perhaps we could address that through a request to reappropriate some of the funds, the fund balance that was in the school board's capital fund that had not been re-appropriated yet and ask for permission to use those funds for that purpose. Those funds already exist. Whereas I know we are unsure at this point. The city is still in the process of their audit of knowing what, if any, true-up might be available to us that we could apply for, and then what that process would be. So we have, you approved an appropriation request to forward to city council. So that has gone forward to the city for consideration. I know that the city manager had some questions. I asked for some more detail, which we then did provide. So we did receive an update from the mayor just yesterday, I believe, that they're still considering that. They're still looking at that. So that has not gone to council yet. So that's where we are with that. So we were kind of paused in our process for requesting any true-up, still not having information on what, if any, amount might be available, what we would ask for. So we turned our attention to that appropriation request. And so that is still in process and being considered at this point.
Say they are still considering, I'm sorry.
No, no.
Say they are still considering it. Is council considering it? Is it on their desk to consider?
I assume not, just because it has not been on a council agenda. But I don't know the answer to that for sure.
Yes. So we, so as you know, the school board voted. And again, we sent the appropriation request to the city. We really can't answer that question in terms of, because we don't know what's on council's desk. But we did ask that the, for the council to take it up for their consideration in November. Then there were questions. So we did provide answers to those questions. So we were hopeful that it would appear at their December meeting. It did not. So it is our understanding that it has not made it to their agenda yet. So we will continue to inquire. But these two items are kind of together that we do not have information yet about the true-up funding application, and we do not have information about the appropriation request.
And when did we approve the appropriation?
On October 27, I believe, was the meeting date. October 28, excuse me.
October 28. All right, and we're still waiting. Okay.
Council's next meeting is in January.
There may be one more.
I think, I think there should be one more.
Next week.
Monday.
But we are expected to, I'm sorry.
Hold, well, so Ms. Quintana, did you have a question about the appropriation request or the true-up, about the appropriation request?
Everything, yes. But we are expected to vote before the January meeting to like return back the $5 million that the.
So the $5 million, I apologize, Ms. Jackson.
Sorry.
I think I can probably answer the question. The $5 million has been committed and so by the board. So the board to uncommit it has to take action. That is not on this evening's agenda. And that's something that I think we may hear more from with the auditor or tonight, or, but it's not something that we're taking care of tonight.
Tonight. But see, my thing is.
Do that before the end of this fiscal year.
Okay, that's it.
Oh, that's what I needed. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Any other questions about the appropriation request from any of the board? Okay. And then as far as the true-up funding application, again, this is going to be a standing item for us because we need to be prepared to apply for it. So I do think maybe we need to kind of put a pin and like re-up our list of things we would apply for. I know we had a couple things on there, some capital expenses. But maybe we should also keep in mind, you know, like we've heard about the task force for absenteeism or things like that, you know, if there's, you know, things that we can keep in mind. But we don't really have a dollar amount on what that would be.
Right, yeah, we're still waiting on that.
So, all right.
Has the true-up requests been formally requested? Or has it just been verbal conversations asking our partners on the other side?
Yeah, we've had some conversation about kind of what that process would look like in general. I think we've gotten guidance from the mayor that that would just be sort of a letter from you to council requesting that. But we've sort of hesitated because we don't, they're still working on closing the year and knowing what their final numbers are to know what, if anything, is even available. So therefore, what we could ask for.
Right. I guess my thought is that perhaps as a board, we should consider at least sending a letter just asking formally for the information on how to apply for the true-up, rather than just a conversation.
Can certainly do that.
From guidance. From conversation to movement.
Do we need to vote to authorize our school board chair to sign on our behalf, or can we just do that?
Or a letter?
If the board wants to take action on it, they should vote on it.
For the school board's consideration, I would ask if you're going to consider an action of that nature, I would ask that you also hold just for a second to get the boundary study update as well because we have, it's not just the true-up funding application that we're waiting on, that we have several items that we have not heard anything about. So it's the true-up funding application. It's also the appropriation request that has not been presented, as far as we know, has not been presented to council for consideration. And then there are other solar projects that we are, that we could potentially lose funding for as well if we do not have, if we don't have any action on that. Again, we're doing our best to try to answer the questions, to making sure that we're dotting the i's, crossing the t's, and fulfilling the request of, you know, from the city. But, so I would ask if.
I would say bundle it, all the things that we're waiting on. We need to bundle it.
With that, if there are no more questions for Mr. Jackson, I would ask Mr. Perkins to come up to give the boundary study update as well as to maybe follow up on this measure, Mr. Perkins as well, to talk about the.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
And that's not an agenda item, but I think it is related.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. White. Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, quickly, not as long as the boomer-sumer group. The boundary update, we did hit a road bump, a slight road bump in the boundary study. We had, when we were looking at our DPA, our data processing or data privacy agreement with the company we're using, they use AWS, which is Amazon's Web Services. And Amazon Web Services store or have servers that are globally located. And we do not want our data being stored offshore. So we have worked through that. There was, so that slight speed bump has been negotiated. But we do have a milestone that we were expecting on December 15. We think we might still hit that milestone, but I'm not going to guarantee that milestone will be hit because of the DPA issue. Also, I do want to update the board on an issue that we're having. And I want to start with saying this. Our contractor, which is Secure Solar Futures, is not asking the city for any concession that any normal person doing business in this city would expect. We are following the processes. But what I am here to voice on behalf of our contractor is that customer service requires consistent application of the code. And remember, I'm the retired police chief for the city. So I understand what consistent application of the code means. And we need reasonable, timely communication from our city. That's all I'm saying. I'm not asking for any concessions on behalf of our contractor. But what is at stake is $19 million in savings for this district and our city because we need roofs replaced that cost millions of dollars. And we get free roofs with this process. We get reduced energy calls, sustainable reduced energy calls. We should be leading the state with our projects. And we have a bump. And here's the bump. We have had 10 projects approved under the Virginia Existing Building Code. That is the standard for existing buildings in the state of Virginia. 10 projects were approved. We had multiple meetings. October 23, our contractor met with city permitting. And it was agreed that we would continue this process. Our contractor was contacted on November 10 and said that after a meeting, that the city would no longer apply the Virginia Existing Building Code to engineering surveys, that they were going to apply a more rigorous and stringent code, the Virginia Construction Code, which is for new construction. What that did was slow down the process. And first, let me say, we are trying to comply because the only recourse we have is to apply or to appeal to the local building appeals board. So we're complying. And so our contractor put together all of the requirements that we believe is against the Virginia or not consistent with the previous 10. And they are requiring us to do more stringent under the Virginia Construction Code, which we do not believe apply. That more stringent work has now been delayed even more because we haven't had any timeline from our permitting department explaining when these will be met and approved. department explaining when these will be met and approved until today and they could not read the plans. So our engineer for our contractors agreed to sit down and go over them. The mean, the, the reason is, the reason that I'm being passionate tonight is, our contractor has investors and the investors have agreed to put up $15 million. They met yesterday with the investor and the investors have two options, to pull out completely or to reduce the funding, which delays us even more in our efforts for sustainable energy and to bring savings to our city. And all we are asking is for consistent, consistent applications when enforcing the code. We will go through the appeal process. We don't ask to change. And then it was, well, it's a safety issue. I've spent 35 years in public service talking about safety. I am not going to put kids, staff, or community in risk of safety. If it is truly safety, why have we not had the 10 previous issued permits approved and inspected? Why have there been no questions about those? That's why we believe it's arbitrary and bureaucratic to cause or to require our contractor to jump through hoops.
Has there been a change in guard?
No. It was a meeting that was held November the 7th with the same people that our contractor met with on October the 23rd and we were notified, our contractor was notified on October, November the 10th that the change in the more stringent requirements would be mandated by the city. That is not consistent application of the code.
So again, again, if, if the board would wish to take action in terms of communication, my ask would be that we would kind of package these requests together because these are the things that we, we would like to ask for greater communication on. We just need to know where, where we stand. We need an update on the true up funding application, on the appropriation request, as well as where we stand with this, with the solar project. So...
And to be fair, I would like to add that Vice Mayor Maguire has been very supportive and has asked the same question of us, why the change? And Mayor Cobb at a meeting asked the same question of permitting, why the change? And the response is that we were, and we were not even told directly, we were, we were copied and there was an email chain that indicated it was a safety concern. And all we're asking is for consistent application, which any person doing business, our city should expect.
Madam Chair.
Safety was the safety concern, yes?
I was gonna say, yeah, do we have a concise idea of what is the safety concern that they have?
They went to a seminar. They did not provide us with that information. We reached out to the presenter of that seminar and we received it in about two hours. And it's an interpretation, it's really what it boils down to, which is why our only recourse is to go through the local appeal, or building, or local appeal board.
And I, I have been, you know, in some communication with the mayor regarding, trying to get some context here. But my curiosity was where are we in the status? Of my understanding was at, as of this time, our CPS and our contractor is in a holding pattern because everything has been submitted to the city and we are waiting on the city to finalize permits that are analogous to 10 previous projects that we've already done. But, but everything has been submitted and so it is waiting for the literal stamp of approval to move forward at this time.
So PH was held up and it was approved in a day. Today, we received notice that they couldn't read the plans. Our engineer, our contractor's engineer has agreed to sit down and, and read the plans for them so they understand. Remember, we have a signed and sealed engineering document that says these roofs can maintain this structure, which is a ballasted solar panels that are on top of our buildings. And remember, they're already in place on 10 buildings under the process that we have followed up to this point.
Madam Chair?
Yes, yes.
I would like to move that we, as a board, vote to allow our chair to sign a letter on the school board's behalf that inquires after the status of three items, the current status of the true up funding application, the appropriation request, and the solar panel permitting process.
And I'll second.
So moved by Dr. Jamison, seconded by Ms. Watkins. Is there any further discussion on this particular motion at this time? I, I do have a clarification question for Dr. Jamison regarding communication about the true up. Are, are you requesting communication so many, so only about the process or also about the dollar amount?
I would request, I think my motion is to ask for a timeline of process and expected response to the items listed, all items listed.
Okay. Any further discussion regarding this matter? Hearing none. All those in favor of this motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Hearing none. Dr. Jamison's motion carries and a letter will be drafted and can be signed on behalf of the board by the chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and that concludes my report.
Okay. Ms. Jackson.
Actually, it's really not.
No offense, but people are leaving during your show.
She probably wishes she could.
After tonight, yep.
We have the most important person to me, anyway, yet to come. Finally get to present the audit for you. But first, before we get to that, we do have our monthly financial update and so I'll, I'll start there and we are reporting to you for the month, through the month of October. So I'll jump right in. Just looking at our revenue forecast for the general fund, based on our experience through October, we're forecast to be about $360,000 above budget. So still tracking really close to budget when we compare against the three-year average of actual experience in the prior three years. So tracking very close to budget on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, we are looking, continuing to look favorable, forecast to be about $4 million below budget based on experience through October and comparing against that three-year average of actual in prior years. So we do look at what was appropriated and kind of trying to track where we might fall by year end if we were to continue the year in the same manner as we've experienced for the first, the first four months of the year. So we do, did have appropriation of $275 million approved. So if our experience thus far were to continue through the end of the year, we would be looking at a, a potential use that's almost $7 million less than what was appropriated there in the general fund. Looking at the Food Services Fund, revenue forecast to be a little bit above budget compared against that three-year average, about $72,000 through the month of October. On the expenditure side, we are forecast to be below budget by about $1.4 million. I do have a note there, that is an anomaly. We did have some, some questions, some billing questions that led us to hold off on paying our, our bills until we got that clarified. So that's gonna, that's going to reset itself. So that, that's kind of a, a, sort of a one-time anomaly based on us holding off until we could get clarity and make sure that we were being billed accurately. So you'll see that reset itself in future months when we, when we catch up with that. So, but if that were to stay the case, as we compare against the, the three-year average and we look at what was appropriated, that does put us by almost about that same amount, about $1.8 million below the appropriated amount for that fund. We do still talk about fund balance in the Food Service Fund because those are federal dollars that, that are required to be used just for food service purposes. So we did budget to use about $730,000 out of fund balance in that fund. So of course, were we to end the year based on that experience and particularly the reduction in expenses that were reflected through October, we would actually be in a position to put about $720,000 back into fund balance. But again, we'll, we'll see that reset when we catch back up with those, those invoices. And the last fund that we, we want to keep track of is our capital fund. So we did have an appropriation approval and later in the spring of just under 18 million. Used almost 10 million of that by year end last year. We have about $420,000 expended as of October 31st of this year. So that leaves us with 7.66 million of the appropriated amount left unspent. Of course, the biggest portion of that is Preston Park and then we do have some other projects that were specified when that was appropriated that are still in process, like paving and some work at other schools. But the biggest chunk of that amount is of course, the ongoing Preston Park project. So I will stop there and I'm happy to take questions or comments.
Is there, are there any questions from the board at this time regarding the financial forecast? Dr. Jamison?
Just a quick question. Have we begun developing a process to put out for requests for funding, use of this year funding should we find ourselves with unspent funds as we approach the end of the fiscal year? Have we started developing that process to figure out how we would strategically deploy every red penny?
We, we have certainly started those conversations amongst my team and we're certainly looking at honing how we, we do projections. As you will hear from our audited financial statements, we had a very large healthcare-related adjustment after June 30 that affected our financials for last fiscal year. We can't have that continue. So, so those are the kinds of things that we are absolutely looking at of, you know, we need to make some changes to how, how we're projecting those kinds of costs in terms of, we are self-funded, so in terms of the actual utilization of our, our health insurance and how are we going to make sure that we have enough funds prior to year end going forward. So all of those things are absolutely related to that, that we don't have a, a firm final procedure in place, but we have absolutely started that discussion of what needs to change in our procedures to...
And, and hear me say, every year, there will be some amount of surplus, we hope, as we're approaching year end, right? In, in a governmental fiscal responsibility method, that's always going to be true. So whatever process we have should account for all yours going forward since we don't have any squish, which I am sure is an official fiscal term. So...
You all right.
Okay. Alright, thank you, Ms. Jackson. And it's back to you again. Let's look at the financial statements. Is there anything unusual to report this month?
I don't have anything additional to add, but I, I'm certainly happy to take any questions.
Questions? Okay, hearing none. Thank you. The statements will be received and filed.
Thank you.
And without further ado, this evening, we have the external auditor's overview of the division's annual comprehensive plan. Mr. John Aldridge, partner with Brown Edwards, will be present, will present an overview of our comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year that ended June 30th, 2025. Mr. Aldridge, thank you very much for coming and we thought we were doing you a great service by moving this towards later in the agenda, but thank you very much for your patience and will you please present your overview?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you all so much for having me tonight. It's, it's a pleasure to see y'all and the fact that my office is here in Roanoke, this is fine. It's, it's, it's no, but I, I tell you what, I do appreciate and respect you all because usually I come in here and scoot out once I do my thing. So I got to really see all the things you get to see at each meeting. So I have a newfound appreciation for the level of detail y'all go through. But again, the other thing I'll mention to you too, with y'all being a school system in Roanoke, if you have any really smart students that like finance, wealth management, please send them my way. We would love to mentor them, talk to them. Some of our best candidates come, you know, we want them to stay in the valley. I mean, I'm from Roanoke, grew up here and so we really want to get these young people back in, in, into the accounting world. And like I said, we've got 70 people or so in my firm just in Roanoke. So we'd love to, to be able to talk to some of your students.
Partnership.
Yeah, yeah, we would love that. So...
I have a nine-year-old who already is hustling the, you know, her entrepreneurial spirit.
Good, good. We would love that. So in your packet of information there, you have several documents for me. And the one I really want to focus on tonight is the, the one that says annual comprehensive financial report. And you have that one there. And so I'm going to go through a few pages and, and if I skip one, just yell. We'll keep this fairly back and forth as we go through. But if you have your document there, if you looked on page 11, I just want to point out something real quick. And on page 11, we have the school board, it's a certificate of excellence from the Association of School Business Officials International. Your financial report was submitted for a, an award from this organization. There are things that you have in your financial report that are above and beyond what you have to have in an audit. So the fact that you get this award and the one on the next page, page 12, the GFOA award, just shows the level of reporting that you're providing your citizens, the folks here in Roanoke. There's just a lot of information here, frankly, you don't have to have. And it just takes it to a new level that I, I want to point that out. And as you know, yeah, just, just your staff. And the other thing I'll tell you, they put this report together 100%. I mean, this isn't Brown Edwards. They do it, hand it to us. So it's fantastic how they do this. But if you go over to page 17 in the document, I just want to point out something to you all here. As you know, each locality in Virginia, including school boards, have to have an audit every year, okay? That audit then gets presented to the governing body and it needs to be done by December 15th, okay? So tonight, I'm presenting that audit. The second paragraph where it says, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects." This is an unmodified or a clean opinion. So that's as good as it gets. So y'all had a clean opinion on the financial statement. So always like to point that out. So you did have a clean opinion, that's...
Woo!
Have one, we definitely want to talk. But y'all, y'all had a clean opinion.
You would have been earlier.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I would have been earlier. But, and then a couple of things I want to mention to you all. If you have your document, go over to page 29 and I just want to hit on a few things and, and a few things I'll, I'll add upon what Ms. Jackson said earlier and y'all talked about. But on page 29, I always like to remind school boards in Virginia this. You see there, the statement of net position, and this looks at the school system with all your various functions, whether it be nutrition, the activity funds, everything shows up here on this one page, on page 29. And the thing that's unique, I want to point out to you all is this, and this is a Virginia thing. You notice there that there's a line item that says capital assets, okay? It's non-depreciable and depreciable. Virginia is one of those crazy states where you cannot, as a school board, issue debt, okay? You're just not allowed. You cannot go out and issue bonds as a school board. So as a result, what Virginia says is, in your case, City of Roanoke, all that debt related to Roanoke City Schools has to be on their books. Well, then the locality has the choice, alright, we want to keep the assets on our books as well. So like all your new school buildings that have debt related, they're sitting over on the city's books. They're not on yours. So a lot of people look at this and they're, they question like, hey, wait, this is a little bit lower. I knew we had more buildings than this. That's what's going on. The other thing I want to point out to you all on here, look down in the liability section. The last one there, net pension and other post-employment benefits liability, $125 million, okay? That, almost all of that, a little over 100 million, is your pension, okay, for your, your teachers. The way it works in Virginia is, there's a calculation that VRS does. They tell you what you have to pay each year into the fund for your pension plan. You guys are making that payment, okay? You're not doing anything wrong. But what it does is saying, alright, the number of assets we have set aside today compared to our calculated liability, what's that look like? And if you did that math, you're going to come that you're $125 million short, okay? It's not cause for alarm. Almost every school system in Virginia is going to have a similar number based on their size because of how it's calculated. But I do just want to point that out. You know, here's your options. You can go ahead, if y'all've got 125 million laying around, y'all could just pay it all and put it in a trust fund. Nobody has that. So... So.
Oh, man.
Yeah, so we don't have that. All right? Now let's look at a couple of other things, if you would. On page number 31, again, I don't know if you have the overhead for this one, but on page 31, I want to point out a few things to you all and we can talk about this. You can see there, we've got your various funds of, of the schools. We've got the general fund, we've got the food services fund, we've got the grants fund, the capital fund, and then the school activity fund. All right. If you look in the middle of the page there, on the liability section, you see the number we've been talking about. Due to City of Roanoke, return of fund balance. So that number, the 20,877,137, that is the amount of funds or funds that will go back to the City of Roanoke. Okay? That's the calculation. We have worked with the city on their side, with your staff, to reach this agreement. Okay? It's not like we didn't broker a deal. We didn't do that. But we're just on both sides, working with them to get to the amount. So Roanoke City will show on their books, an amount due from the schools of 20,877,137. So the two amounts will match up. So they will have an amount just like that on their books. The other thing I will mention to you all, and, and if you want to think about it and how will this look, this is how, what will happen and just, I'm making it real simple for you. Notice up there, that cash and cash equivalents, 31,599. Just think of it, that's now going to become basically $11 million. Because that's what's going to happen. Cash will go down to satisfy that liability. Okay? We've already picked it up and run it through the, the revenue and expenditures, but how it works going forward is your cash will just go down to, to satisfy that liability. The other thing that I'll mention to you all while we're here is down in the fund balance section, Ms. Jackson mentioned this. You see there, y'all have got committed for transportation sinking fund, $250,000. And then you've got an amount committed for transitional costs associated with the end of pandemic of $5 million. You all, as a school board, voted to commit those funds. Okay? You all act as the highest governing body of the, of the school board. So the fact that you're the ones that committed those funds, you also have to be the ones that uncommit those funds. So y'all will take action, whatever date you decide, but it really needs to be before June 30th because we need to have, should happen in this year. Okay? You will vote to uncommit those funds and then the same thing will happen. It'll either be a due to, or you'll settle it up during the year. The cash will move during FY '26. But you guys will uncommit it and then Ms. Jackson and her team can then go about recording the transaction and sending that money back to the city. So that's what's going on. So originally it was, they were going to look at it as all one thing, but the fact of the matter is they, we could not do the uncommitting part because it was already after year end. It has to be done before year end, June 30th. So that's, that's why that piece is still sitting there. So I'm going to hit pause because I know that's a lot to absorb before I go any further. Any questions on that piece?
I actually have a, a couple of questions because this is still throwing me a bit. So end of pandemic relief funding, I'm assuming we're federal sources of funds? No?
No, that was just local, local fund balance that we set aside anticipating that because when the federal funds went away, that.
This was just the titling of it.
Correct.
To account for that takeover.
Yeah. When that big of a, I mean, that was almost 100 million that we had an additional funding over three years. That went away, that, that takes a little time to adjust back to sort of more normal levels. So that's why we identified that for that purpose.
So when we, okay, thank you. That, that helps. So because the request to return the fund balance came after last fiscal year and we had already committed it, is that, this is an amount that was not, has not been re-appropriated? It was not appropriated with this year's budget?
Correct. So the portion that is included, there, there is an intended use of fund balance in the current year that, that we are keeping on our books.
Right, right.
And that's part of the, we discussed that with the city to make sure we were all on the same page.
Right.
Of how everybody wanted that to look, that that is included in our, our appropriated amount for the current year. So.
Right.
You know, I, I guess we could consider that 5 million as part of that 10 million that was appropriated, but at the end of the day, it, it would net to the same amount that would have to go back to the city.
And this is just out of curiosity, what happens if we don't vote to uncommit it?
Good question.
David Collins.
That's, that's definitely more of a legal question, but I think some would, some would take the approach that they still would trump you, not a good word, but they still would have sway supersede you.
Right.
Since they give you the budget, that they could, on your behalf, just say, we're uncommitted.
Yeah, I mean, they could come take it.
Yes.
Right? Right?
It's someone, okay.
And my understanding, this was, we had our audit committee meeting a week ago and this was, I had very similar questions of, so we have to vote to uncommit monies so that they would revert to the city's books. And that was the understanding that I got. But is this kind of analogous to how the board voted to move monies from fund balance to capital fund? It wasn't appropriate or anything. We had just said, we will only use these funds for capital purposes, but then those funds were not, the ones that were not appropriated yet, not spent yet because of the change in understanding with the city and those funds, those were reverted back.
Yes.
So we, we had voted for them to be for something in particular and we weren't going to use them otherwise, but because we had never gotten them appropriated, that was like an 8 million that.
Exactly. This might help you on that. If you just flip the page over real quick, on page 32, you can see there in the capital fund on exhibit four, page 32, notice there the transfers and what you did is transferred 8.3 million dollars out of the capital fund, moved it back to the general fund. So it's part of that 20 million dollar number. So that 8 mil, so basically 8 million dollars went back. So it's, it's part of the 20 million that's going to go to the city. They did, working with the city, you all are keeping 8,82,000 in the capital fund.
But that's the unspent, already appropriated monies from the May 15th-ish appropriation request we did of 17 point whatever million that was in our appropriation report of which 7.9-ish hasn't been spent yet this year because it's for Preston Park. Correct?
Good.
Confused with the remaining 8 million, that was what we did our appropriation, appropriation request from for the trailers because that was what was left in the fund ahead of this audit report where we hadn't determined how we would.
Trailer.
Agree the monies on the books.
Yes, so that's part, that, that's included, as Ron just said, in the 20 million being returned, we're asking through that appropriation request for it to come back to the schools for this particular purpose, if that makes sense. So as of June 30th, it goes back to the city, but we're asking in the current fiscal year if the city would consider letting us have that back for the purpose of the trailers. Clear as mud?
Oops, I got it.
Thank you, Mr. Aldridge.
Yeah, no, that's, that's good. All right. So a couple of other things just to mention to you all while you have the financial report I do want to talk to you about. If you had, and went to page number 69 in the report, and this is your budget, is it 67 in yours?
Yes.
Six, seven? Yeah. I've got kids in college and they haven't shared that with me yet, so I.
69 used to be in some.
Yeah, so on schedule A there, on page 69, you've got the budget for the general fund. And you can see there, the City of Roanoke, the original budget was 106,900,000. And so what happens is that 20 million or so gets netted against that amount. So we show it as 86 because that's honestly, you could do it either way, but this way's probably proper because you wouldn't want to show an expenditure for 20 million. You just really reduce what they gave you as the proper treatment there. And then you can see what the Commonwealth gave you. And then here is, Ms. Jackson mentioned, look at total expenditures. Y'all budgeted 248,750,000. They came in at 249,986. So unfortunately, this would fall under a budget non-compliance. This would have to be deemed a finding from an audit standpoint since you spent more than your budget. She's done a nice job of explaining what happened, but as you know, you're self-insured. So being self-insured, you're always prone to ups and downs. You don't know what's going to happen. And I think if I recall, the bill that came in for June was approximately about 5 million more than anticipated or something like that. Yeah, so it was about 5 million more that hit at the 11th hour. Okay? Because again, what happens with self-insurance, there might be a two, three-month lag until you get the claim. Like the person goes in June and it doesn't make it your way until the first of September. So when your staff's coming before you in July, everything may look great. When they come to you in August, everything's getting a little, little dicier, but all of a sudden we get to September, a claim came through and it's really hard to gauge that and that makes it tough. So they've been, staff has been in contact, I think, or they're going to be with, with your actuary, your insurance company, how we can better estimate that in the future. What happened in this particular case, again, there's so much privacy, you're not going to know exactly, but we need to know how we need to budget, you know? So we don't get hit with this 5 million surprise. Because again, if it wasn't for that, there wouldn't be a budget non-compliance because you only went over 1.2 million. It truly is this, this one thing that hit. And again, what I will tell you, this settle up with, because I think it's important to mention this, the settle up with the city, the give money back, it has nothing to do with this. Okay? This is totally separate from that. So that didn't cause this budget item to, to pop up. So just want to point that out. All right? And then just a couple of other things I'll mention to you all while I got you. On page 95, this again, is a great example of history. You know, again, being a person that likes numbers, I really like this one. But on page 95, you can see for the last 10 years, the funding that you have received for the school system. And you know, a couple to look at, it's a lot of numbers on here, but if you look at 2025, you all received 167 million from the Commonwealth. Okay? If you went all the way back to 2016, the Commonwealth gave you or provided 83 million. So it's almost doubled in a 10-year period, what the Commonwealth has done. So the state of Virginia does a nice job with education. I mean, I'm sure there's some things y'all would like different, but the Commonwealth, considering if you went back and looked at your ADM, it's basically the same today as it was 10 years ago. It's 13,700. And your funding from the state's doubled in that period. So just, just want to point that out. The state does a nice job. The other thing, you can see the City of Roanoke, they gave you all or provided right at 79 million back in 2016. This year was 86 because of the settle up, but before that was 106 million. So again, you can see the trend there. And then finally, the last thing I'll mention to you on this particular doc, document is on page 102. I told you all that you don't have this, the debt on your books. Okay? All that debt is sitting on the, the city's books. And if you ever wanted to know how much debt was sitting on the city's books on your behalf, you've got it right here. And you can see at the end of June, they're carrying 110 million of debt that's related to school facilities and projects. So that's on their side. What I will tell you is you guys make the debt payments. I mean, that's, that's, they're not paying the debt on your behalf. Yeah.
We know.
Yeah, no, 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 no. But, but just to put in perspective, y'all paid for debt services past year, a little over 10 million. So y'all have got debt of 110 on their books, but you're paying it. So y'all paid right at 10 million of principal and interest this year on debt. The only thing not completed on this audit is nothing, not your fault at all, it's the federal government's fault, is we have to also test the federal money that comes through the school system. Okay? That's called a single audit. Usually when I'm here, I tell you the results of that. Well, shockingly as it may be, the, the guidelines only came out three weeks ago. Final guidelines, three weeks ago. So we've got all these localities in Virginia where we're finishing up the audit, only to have to tell the client, we're technically not done yet. We still have to come back and test the federal money. So you will get a separate report with that and list if we have any issues there. So I just want to let you know that. Your staff didn't do anything wrong. It's just the federal government, okay, you're, you're 18 months after year end, here's the rules. I mean, so it's, it's kind of how we have to test it based on that. I don't anticipate things changing much from last year, but I've already been surprised with one client of mine. The rules did change on, it was a HUD Housing Development Grant. Some rules changed on that. So anyway, stay tuned for that. I know you can't wait. But the only other thing I'll mention to you all is, like I said, we audit the activity funds as well in the schools. Okay? We look at those. We had a few minor suggestions there, nothing I would worry too much about, things like collecting money in the classrooms, few instances where it's sat there for a couple of days, you know, just minor things the staff is aware of, they're working on. And then like I said, finally, I, I just need to brag a little bit on your staff. They have been great to work with. So it's, you know, I would say the same, some of their counterparts across the street, trying to settle up this amount due to, due from, a lot of times, the accountants are the ones that are, all right, make it work. And they've done a really good job of working and getting to a resolution here. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions y'all have.
There's one thing that's sticking in my mind. How is it possible for our ADM to be the same 10 years ago?
It's, let's see here, I've got a, go ahead if you want to answer that.
That's probably a question. How does that even function?
I mean, really our enrollment, I mean, as, as we saw when I was talking about budget, that it's, in recent years, it's gone up and down quite a bit, but, but for that reason, you know, we were kind of on a, on an upward trajectory, you know, maybe 15 years ago to 10 years ago, pretty steady, but since COVID, we've been up, down, up, down, up, down. So we are kind, kind of, when you look across that whole time, pretty similar.
In mind that we were projected to decline.
Yeah.
And so when, when, when I got here in 2020, we were projected to decline, but that hasn't been.
We're increasing.
So many municipalities did decrease, in fact.
Yeah, there's, if you wanted to look at that in particular, it's on page 107 and you can see the, it's a nice statistical table there. It actually went from 13,585 to 13,706. So it went up a little bit, 120 over a 10-year period. So again, but yeah. Yes, ma'am.
I guess the only thing I would say is, thank you for all of your hard work. My understanding is that your team has been instrumental in helping us make sure that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed in a somewhat turbulent time for accounting and financial purposes. So thank you for all your hard work. I certainly appreciate it and all your time tonight.
No worries. Any other questions?
I don't think so. Thank you very much, very much, Mr. Aldridge. And. Thank you. So with that, it kind of feels like December seems an appropriate time for like the budgets of years past, present, and future, like, you know? So, but, and to keep in that same vein, we're moving on to committee reports. And the first thing I wanted to share is about the Joint City Council School Board Finance Task Force, which is the ghost of budget future, I suppose. So with that said, I do think it, it was very helpful, I think, in the timing of the audit report to note some things just about that, you know, we saw that there was an unanticipated late expense that then impacted our overall expenses for the year. And that was something that we kind of started talking about is how do we go about if our funding policy changes moving forward, how do we make? unanticipated late expense that then impacted our overall expenses for the year, and that was something that we kind of started talking about, is how do we go about if our funding policy changes moving forward, how do we make year-end expenses in June with an unknown healthcare claims that come out way over budget in September when we finalize our books? What do we do? How do we do that? And something that Mr. Aldridge did note is, as the funding policy go, you know, if there are changes to be made, that it would be wise and prudent to make sure that not just, you know, Dr. Jameson and I have been on that committee, we've been reporting out that we've had, say, the lawyers making sure we're looking at, that we're up, you know, to standard with respect to Virginia code and things like that, but also to make sure that there's a financial expert who looks at it to make sure that there's the what of what the policy says, but then there's the logistical how with regards to accounting to make sure that we take into account. So if there's any language about encumbrances, or assigned funds, or things like that at our fiscal year end compared to when we close out our books, things for us to try to keep in mind. So I did want to report out about the Joint City Council School Board Finance Task Force. That group has met three times, Dr. Jameson reported out on our last meeting, which was in November. The city's proposed terms have been reviewed, and the schools have provided an impact analysis to the city about how the current proposal would impact our, our needs-based budget. We, as a board, do not endorse the draft terms as they are written, and as part of the Joint Finance Task Force with the city, we continue to advocate for the needs of our CPS. Ultimately, while of course, our CPS, we will provide context and impact and the need of our division, ultimately, it's city council and city administration who would write and potentially approve any policy changes regarding the funding. We were scheduled to have further meetings with this Joint Finance Task Force as of tomorrow, but that meeting has been postponed for further review by city representation for some of the things that we've already provided. We do know that with the changes to the fund balance policy, or how we have been operating with that as seen in tonight's audit, that, like I mentioned, the language of any policy, it would be, future policy would be important for the auditor to, an auditor or a financial expert to review that, to ensure how we do that, like I said, especially with regard to encumbrances, or can we, can we assign funds for healthcare expenses or things like that? And I know Mr. Aldridge did say he might be able to, you know, share some samples that other divisions or other organizations use regarding encumbrances, because that's not something we have done in the past, and something that has been discussed with the Joint Finance Task Force. Now, we are very thankful that our city council has funded us above the minimum requirement, and that's been noted in multiple articles, and, and we've noted that too, we thank city council often for how they have funded us over the years. But it's also important to note that an independent J-LARC study was done, that the minimum as set by the standards of quality for the Commonwealth is well below a true minimum of what would be acceptable educational provisions for all of the students in the Commonwealth. And Ms. Jackson has highlighted that at the Joint City Council School Board meeting, and also at the Take Your Legislator to School event, where she showed there's the standard of quality, which is the minimum requirement, which for example, was one amounted to one kindergarten aide for about every 10 kindergarten classes that we have. While we fund, or we, we expense one for every two kindergarten classes. So just by funding above that minimum standard of quality, that has to be balanced from something. Sam Delegate Rasool noted that the state of Virginia is still trying to work towards the gold standard of counseling ratios. So we know that the students of Roanoke have certain higher needs based on our population, and so we choose as a board to approve a budget that's a needs-based budget that meets our students at a ratio that isn't funded at the, which is the minimum standard of quality by the state, and those other funds have to come from somewhere. So, so we just wanted to note that, you know, there's what is required by a minimum standard, but then there is required, you know, ethically by us for a needs-based budget for our students and our staff. And also, it was also noted that we pay our debt service. So it's also important when we're, say, if we're trying to get a gauge, or if others in the Commonwealth, or others in our, of our stakeholders are trying to get a gauge of, are we spending enough for the right amount, or what is the right amount? How do we compare, whether it's compare locally, or to other divisions that are like us, to try to make it an apples-to-apples comparison? And a lot of times, when we're being compared to other divisions, we, we do pay our own debt service, they don't. Well, if you take that out, then we're really in line percentage-wise with how much, with other localities, with how much funding and revenue comes into the city. So we just really want to emphasize that education is an investment, and other things to report out from that audit committee meeting, because I also report out about that, is that there was an annual simplified comparative report for the city that was shared, and something that struck, you know, that stuck out to me is that what we do to educate our students with a diploma and a resume is we provide them the ability to earn a living that is very close to, say, the median income of Roanoke as it stands right now, and that, that's something that's like a publicly available report for the city. So education is an investment in our students, in our families, in our workforce development, in the health and welfare of our city. So I just wanted to give that update about our Joint Finance Task Force.
Ms. Apel, can I just add one thing? I'm on both of the same committees with Ms. Apel, and I just would say this. A, this process has been interesting on the heels of going over the audit, because A, it makes me realize that we are actually, the city actually funds us above the minimum, but not nearly as much above the minimum as I thought. So that is, that's been an interesting realization when you take the $20 million out of fund balance. The number is, is still lower than that, and we appreciate every dollar, but it is not as much over as I thought. And I also would like to say that I believe that it has been the commitment of this board for the nearly nine years that I've been on it, that our students don't just need above the minimum, they deserve it. And that has been the commitment and the heart of this board under two superintendents and the entirety of my term. So that's all I want to say about that.
Thank you. So to continue on, reports out from other committees, as I mentioned, the audit committee did meet last week, and we got a big preview of the audit as presented by Mr. Aldridge this evening, and we also, as mentioned, delved a bit into the annual simplified comparative report for the city. Other committees, is there anyone, Ms. Trigg or Ms. Watkins, any committee meetings to report out from? Ms. Quintana, Mr. Link?
Transportation was rescheduled. I look forward to it next week.
My quick report is simply that the RBGS Regional Board is meeting in, it's February 2nd, and I am going to be unable to attend that meeting. If somebody is interested in knowing what happens at the GovSchool Board meetings, and you'd like to go as our representative, then please let me know, and I'll give you the, or, 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 yeah, or Ms. Winderware, who could give you the date and the time. They're quick, if that is any encouragement.
Great.
February 2nd, 6:30, yeah, February 2nd at 6:30.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Cherry, did you have any committee meetings to report out from? Okay, and I was saying, technology was supposed to meet, but we had to reschedule that meeting, and I think that that was it for committee reports. And regarding the VSBA Fall Conference update, tonight, the board would like to share that during the VSBA Convention on Thursday, November 20th, it was announced that Ms. Joyce Watkins was elected to the Virginia School Board Association Board of Directors. Watkins will serve as the Legislative Positions Federal Relations Committee Chair for the 2025-26 school year. Congratulations, Joyce. Would anybody like to share any of their key takeaways from the VSBA conference before we move on? Moving on to ongoing business, the one bit of ongoing business I did want to share is I saw it come through the email, that VSBA holds these weekly Zoom updates on legislative advocacy, it's Fridays from Richmond. I do catch those, because they go through the bajillion, that's like squish.
Yeah, it's real.
Same, same, same glossary. But all the bills that have anything to do with education and potential education impact, and I just run through them, and then you can kind of keep track, and it is great oftentimes, like, anyway, I've, I've sat in my car while the kids play at the park, and just like, you know, keep track of what, what the bill, you know, what bills are coming through, and if they get through the house, or if they get through one side or the other, and if there's a partner bill and things like that. So it's a, especially since, you know, we have some, our representation as far as advocacy, and that's a big thing that we do, I do find it very informative, and it's very easy, and you can just sign up for the Zoom meetings and attend or not, and, and that's great. And Ms. Haney, our, who has, we've worked with, is usually one of the ones who does that, and she's great. So moving on to any other ongoing business?
Breakfast with Santa.
Yes, reminders, reminders. Breakfast with Santa is Saturday, 9 to 11, get your tickets. And then winter break is coming up, and then you can see our other future meetings. And of note is that January school board meeting and the May school board meeting, if you had put them in your calendar, make sure you have updated the correct location, because we had to block locations. So just make sure January will be at William Fleming, not here, and May will be at Patrick Henry, not here. So I think, just our thoughts to all our staff, students, and families, be safe, not just tonight, but as you travel over the winter break, because we won't see anybody else after that. And hearing no further business, this meeting is adjourned.
Happy holidays, happy holidays, everybody.